Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for September 3rd, 2019. Item number one, can we call the roll, please?
Councilmember Brennan.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Mayor Mars.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Contreras.
Here.
Thank you very much. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Thank you. Item number 3A, Special Resolution of Appreciation to Retired Firefighter Dave Judd. And on behalf of the City of Shakopee and its residents, thank you, Mr. Judd, for your 37 years of continuous service to our department. Lot to be proud of. Thank you very much. We will entertain a motion. Councilmember Lehman.
Mr. Mayor, I'll offer Resolution R-219-094, A Resolution of Appreciation to Firefighter Dave Judd in recognition of his retirement and honoring him with 37 years of service with the City of Shakopee.
A second.
I have a motion and a second by Councilmember Brennan. Before we vote, we will read the resolution into the public record. And Councilwoman Whiting will do that. However, Councilwoman Lehman.
Mr. Mayor, speaking to the motion, I guess I would like to offer a thank you for all your years to this community, and I'll let you've done for everybody. Thirty-seven years is a long time. The amount of appreciation that this community has for you is probably never going to be truly known and felt, but I can tell you it's pretty great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I also agree with that. Thank you for your service, and it'd be my honor to read Resolution Number R-2019-094, A Resolution of Appreciation to Dave Judd. Whereas Dave Judd became a firefighter with the Shakopee Fire Department on August 1st, 1982, after sending a postcard to the department, and whereas Dave completed and continued his fire service education throughout his years of service, maintaining the highest competency and serving the community with confidence, and whereas Dave diligently and unselfishly served the residents of the City of Shakopee while on the fire department, and whereas Dave faithfully responded to numerous fire and emergency calls regardless of the untimeliness of said calls and personal and family disruptions, and whereas Dave's wife Jan supported him and their two children Beth and Andy during those times, always waking up with Dave and making sure he was prepared, and whereas on many occasions, Dave put the health, safety, and welfare of Shakopee residents ahead of his own, and whereas Dave served in leadership roles as captain, training officer, district chief, deputy chief, and assistant chief, ensuring that all firefighters had the necessary equipment and training, and whereas Dave retired from the Shakopee Fire Department on August 31st, 2019, after 37 years of service, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Shakopee hereby expresses its sincere appreciation and gratitude to Dave Judd for his 37 years of dedicated service to the city. Adopted in regular session of the City Council of the City of Shakopee, held this third day of September 2019.
Thank you, Councilor. I have a motion and a second. The resolution's been read into the public record. Mr. Reynolds, did you have any comment?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to say that in my time here, a little over four and a half years now, Dave, it's been an honor and a privilege. What you've brought to this department over the years, a lot of people don't recognize, but your stability in this organization is something that has been treasured and will be sorely missed. Thank you so much, sir, for all your long years of service.
Thank you. Councilmember Brennan?
Thank you very much for your time that you've spent here in the community and for your service.
Councilwoman Contreras?
Thank you very much, sir. Rob, you've done.
Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. You can have the councilmembers come up front. Dave and Chief could come up front first. We'll take a little photo op. No, thank you.
Go this way, just a little bit, just the center top of you behind you. Uh huh. All right, happiness. Coming a little closer on the end here. There you go, guys. Looking right here. Uh huh. And once again, make me believe it. There you go, right there. Nice.
All right. And then let's have the uniform officers all come forward. And let's get a group photo here with all of you up. And I suggest the tall guys, the tall men and women, and men and women in the back. Shorter guys up front. All right. You might have to stand outside to get an aerial photo. Come around on the curve of the diap.
Yeah.
Go ahead and get behind the dais.
We're used to moving the equipment.
Dais, if you would.
A little longer than 20 years in a day, huh?
Everybody in the photo?
Yeah, the damn mirror, I don't know.
Find a little window where I can see you. Tippy toes at the back. Uh huh.
Come on, Dan.
All right, guys. Looking good. On three, ready? One, two, and three. And a couple more. Ready? One, two, three. And here we go again. A little happier. Awesome. Nice.
Excellent. Thank you all.
There's Wednesday drills. I don't see a Wednesday drill.
Hop up the button or what?
Oh.
It does.
Ryan, move along, sir. Move along.
Thank you. All right, moving along then. Item number four, Approval Agenda. Any changes, corrections? Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Thank you. Councilwoman Whiting?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Councilwoman Contreras. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to consent business. Are there any changes, Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing from staff, sir.
Councilwoman Whiting?
To pull 5A4, please.
5A4. Councilwoman Lehman?
5C2.
Didn't hear that, Councilor.
5C2.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lehman?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Before we vote, we would read the modified consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. These are the consent agenda items for September 3rd of 2019. 5A1 approves the minutes from the August 20th, 2019 meeting. 5A2 approves the on-sale and Sunday liquor licenses for Chili's Grill and Bar located at 8098 Old Carriage Court. 5A3 approves the interview committee recommendation for the planning commission and board of adjustment and appeals vacancy. 5B1 authorizes approval of the final version of the indemnification and cooperation agreement regarding the Flying Cloud Airport Joint Airport Zoning Board and the Flying Cloud Airport Zoning Ordinance. And finally, 5C1 accepts quotes and awards a contract in the amount of $39,837.49 to Gopher State Seal Co., Incorporated for the 2019 Trail Seal Coat Project.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. I have a motion. I have a second for the modified consent agenda. It's been read into the public record. There would be no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Now I'd like to call on any resident citizen that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome on an item not on the agenda. Seeing none, we will move ahead then to item number seven, Business Removal Consent. And we'll start with 5A4, Councilmember Whiting, the consideration of resignation of Darren Nelson as Finance Director. Jay?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did not want to let this slide by without offering first my thoughts. And Mr. Nelson, you've led this city's finance department in a professional and taken it to a level that it hasn't been. Not that there had any been a concern before you, but you've taken it to a new height. And I just want to express my thanks and appreciation and wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lehman?
I'd like to make a motion to deny his resignation request.
I have a motion on the table. Looking for a second? Looking for a second? Councilmember Lehman, with deep regret, I inform you that we, your motion fails due to lack of second.
It's dry.
Councilwoman Brennan?
I just want to thank you for always being available to answer questions and a good teacher to myself and to, I think, the greater community. And I have always loved going to your budget open houses and talking to you. And I'm so grateful that you did offer that to the community.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Brennan.
Councilwoman Contreras?
You're such a genuine person. I really appreciate it. The few times that we did talk, you always gave me the correct advice that I needed, the advice I needed. And I appreciate it, honestly. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Nelson, on behalf of our, I think, the council and our citizenry and our community, you have brought increased integrity and an eye for detail on our financial department. I think we're very fortunate to have you for the time we did. It is with regret that we have this motion in front of us. You have provided our city a great detail for the finance department and the role that you have. I want to say personally, thank you very much. Do appreciate that. I do wish you the very best in your next journey on your role. But I do have a motion on the table. I do have a second. Did you have one last comment?
No, I think we're good.
Darren?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for those kind words. I am truly going to miss Shakopee. It's been the three and a half years, but it's, I mean, it's been, it's grown on me, and I've loved every minute of it. And we've accomplished a lot in our time, and I'm really going to miss being here, too. So I look forward to watching you guys, and you got a lot of exciting projects and exciting endeavors on the horizon. So good luck with that, and I wish you the best, and thank you for your support along the way, too. So you're a great group of staff and great council, so thank you.
I think we had a motion and a second. Mr. Reynolds, any?
Well, my comments are in the memo, but I will say the one thing I appreciated about Darren is that when we first met, I sat down and I said, "We have to get over talking like finance people and talking like administration and discuss municipal finances in a way that people can understand." And Darren got that immediately. And we've worked hard over the last several years to, even in our budget documents, to make sure people can open that thing and figure out what the heck it is we're talking about. Because municipal finance is not easy for people to understand. And we can make it very difficult, and then we can say, "Oh, well, it's really difficult. You're not going to be able to understand this," and then do things. The key is, is that if we're truly going to be transparent, people have to understand what it is we're talking about. And Darren, more than anything else, your financial acumen was beyond reproach. But that, to me, as a city administrator, was the most important piece of the puzzle that you brought to our organization. You're going to be sorely missed by the staff as a whole. You know that. And we sincerely appreciate the hard work that you gave us over the years and look forward to you going on to bigger and brighter things in the future. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And just for the record, I believe that this resignation has nothing to do with the red arrow in the finance department on... Motion on the table and a second for Councilmember Lehman?
Mayor, who made the motion and the second?
I don't think there was a motion.
Oh, I apologize. We had a motion. It failed because of the lack of second. Councilwoman Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Darren Nelson as Finance Director.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Councilmember Lehman?
Mr. Nelson, don't take it personally when I vote against this motion. Look back at my history. It's being consistent.
I will say, one of Darren's hallmarks is that every vote, every budget that he brought forward, you, Councilwoman Lehman, voted for. That, I think, speaks a lot.
Just pointing out that long-term employees are, and you're not a long-term employee, but you're a good employee, that have left, I've either made a motion to deny the resignation or voted against it. Not that I'm not wishing you the best endeavors in your new venture. Just want to be consistent. It's my way of heartfelt, my heartfelt way of saying I don't want you to leave.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilwoman Lehman.
A motion on the table and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you for your service to our community, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you.
Next item, 5C2, which is County Road 101 Stormwater Reroute Project. Councilwoman Lehman?
Mayor, I read, I thought I read it here somewhere where the proposed action is to approve not only the study but the implementation of the changes necessary. The cover says just a study, but I could have swore I read somewhere where it goes into the improvements up to a certain dollar amount.
Right on Budget Impact on the front page, 284, 382.
No, I think, I read somewhere that I thought I read somewhere where it went to the whole project, but we're authorizing the project also up to a certain dollar amount. Am I inaccurate on that?
Steve?
Mayor and councilmembers, that approval would be part of the 20 budget that you would be approving in the capital improvement program, that being the approval of the budget and expenditures for the project. This action tonight, I'm only asking you to approve the professional services agreement with WSB and their consultant, Blondo.
And they're going to look at all alternatives besides just the one that's shown?
Mayor and councilmembers, a feasibility study has been performed by WSB prior to this work that we're engaging. Their original feasibility study began in 2016, and over the past several years, we've fleshed out probably 10 different alternatives, working with the watersheds, working with the county. And it is generally narrowed down to this one option, with the exception, there might be some adjustments based on the archaeological study that we will ensue. But we're narrowed down on running a storm sewer down the county right-of-way along County Road 101.
And then the last question I had. Where it turns from the county right-of-way north, kind of by the PV elevator, where it meets up with the river, is that private property or is there an easement in that area?
Mayor and councilmembers, that is actually on Three Rivers Park District property. So it is just west of the PV property, not the right owner at this time, but that would be us working with Three Rivers District to, Three Rivers Park District to get the proper easements from them. I would expect a donation for that. It's not set in stone yet, but that is, that is what we will be pursuing.
Okay. All right.
More questions?
No, I think that answers it.
Okay. Other questions, councilors of staff? Councilwoman Whiting?
Just a comment. This is culturally a very sensitive area, and at least we know that potentially the right-of-way has been disturbed already. We may or may not run into something. It's hard to say, but to me, this seems like the safest route. You never know what you're going to dig into, though, I guess. But and it does sound like the staff has put an exhausting effort into trying to work with all the parties and get this right.
Okay. Other questions of staff? If not, Councilwoman Lehman?
Authorize the execution of professional service agreement with WSB and Associates, Inc. for design bidding and construction management services, which will come back, for the reroute Stormwater to protect historic sites, project Storm 19-003.
I have a motion and a second by Councilwoman Whiting. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you all. Now I would entertain a motion to go into recess for the EDA meeting. Councilwoman Brennan?
I'll make a motion to go into recess for the EDA meeting.
Councilwoman Contreras, thank you. Second. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. We are now on recess. Mr. President?
Thank you. Welcome to the September 3rd, 2019, meeting for the Shakopee Economic Development Authority. Please make note of the role. First item on the, item is Mr. Lehman.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
A second.
I have a motion and a second by Member Brennan to approve the agenda. Any questions on the agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number three, Consent Business. Mr. Mars?
Mr. President, I'll offer the consent business 3A, EDA minutes.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and second by Brennan. Any questions on the EDA minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are on item 4A. Mr. Kurski?
Mr. President and Board Members, this is concerning the TIFF District for soils in the South Bridge area. So if you remember, that original district amount was about $2 million. You can see from the final note that it was just over 1.3 million. Since that time, the developer has gotten a loan to fund, because they have to upfront those expenses. Per the agreement, they've done that. And basically, tonight, they're asking for a consent and a stopple certificate so that that lender has the rights to future TIFF revenues should the developer not pay on that note. And his, the banks limited to the amount that was spent on the TIFF district, which is the 1.3. The difference between what he borrowed and what's in the TIFF district were some expenses that were deemed not TIFF-eligible.
Questions of staff? Mr. Mars?
So I remember when this soil thing was being discussed well over almost a year and a half ago, and this number was supposed to be 400,000. Now it's 1.3, but in no way, we are only using the Soil Remediation TIFF for $1,387,138.04. Is that correct?
Mr. Board Member, President and Board Member, that's correct. So the original amount that was approved in the original TIFF agreement was over $2 million. The developer was able to get the bid under what that budget was. The remediation was not as bad as they expected. So our exposure is limited to the amount that was spent for qualified TIFF expenditures.
And then follow-up question, Mr. President. This area that was remediated of contaminated soil now contains a bar and restaurant and will contain a mixed-use development. Is that correct?
Mr. President and Board Members, there are a couple of pads left beyond the bar and restaurant that was built. They have received preliminary approvals for a 58-unit mixed-use project that would serve people with special needs for that area. That has not come forward as a project yet, but what that will do, because the residential portion of that project does not pay fiscal disparities, it would accelerate the repayment of that note in the number of years. By law, those districts can go 20 years. That project will accelerate the repayment.
And there's then one extra lot beyond that?
Mr. President and Board Members, correct. There's one other lot adjacent to the restaurant that's still left open for development.
Thank you.
Member Lehman?
Just so I can understand this clearly, the original TIFF note was 2 million?
I believe it was 2.1 and some change.
Okay. And the actual cost of the contractor to do the mediation was 1.387?
Well, it was actually, including some expenses that are not qualified, about 1.5 million.
Well, if they're not qualified, they wouldn't be paid for with the TIFF note, correct?
Correct. So they, he spent the 1.5. The qualified expenses out of that were the 1.37.
Okay. So I'm going to round this to 1.4.
Okay.
So we've got a half a million dollars of a TIFF note that isn't going to be used on remediation. So why is that dollar amount not going back to repaying that early?
So this is like getting a mortgage, if you remember. So he originally thought his house was going to cost $2 million. He only spent 1.4 on it. So there's no money coming back. That money was never spent, so it's never recorded in the TIFF. So the 1.4 million is actually money expended in the TIFF that's in that note that'll be paid back over 20 years or sooner, depending what the development is.
Okay. Earlier, it was a 2.1 TIFF bond.
Mr. President, no. So in this particular instance, the developer goes and has to borrow the money to do the remediation. So he went to a bank and borrowed 1. the money to do the remediation. So he went to a bank and borrowed one point five million. Of that qualified expenses were three, one point three seven, so that's money out of his pocket. He gets paid back at, uh, an interest rate, um, that's on the note over time, and then the bank's using that note as its security to make sure they get paid. There, the difference is gone forever, because he didn't spend that money. So it actually, if the other projects get built, that note will retire faster, because it was originally calculated at the two point one million, but now we're at one point four roughly, so the interest will drop substantially.
So you're, if I'm getting this right, you're telling me the bank wants a sec, first security interest on the, uh, refunded taxes under the TIF agreement?
So, so twice a year, the county will send over to us, whatever the value of the property is, for all the taxing districts after they take their servicing fee, then we take ten percent off that. The difference goes to pay down that note. Um, and so the bank's saying, we give that money to developer who then has to pay the bank. If he does not do that, they get the rights to that money.
For a secured party?
Up to, up to.
Up to the one point three seven.
So, there, that's what I asked in a question to staff earlier about the one point five, five. You know, we are, the, the tax increment generate off this area of development, we are only paying the one three eight seven, and not a dime more, and it can pay off faster if those developments get up and running and start generating.
Yeah, if you remember, uh, Mr. President, Board members, the soil TIFs typically take the longest, because it's mostly commercial, because this potential will have a component of residential, it has the ability to probably pay off sooner. Most are paid off in seventeen to eighteen years. This potential could be paid off much sooner.
Any other questions of staff? Uh, I, I, did you have one? I have one question, and I just wanna make sure, uh, I think I know the answer, but all of the potentially buildable pads or, or, uh, parcels, ha, the soil has been remediated. Is that correct?
Mr. President, Board members, that's correct. So this is, he, the applicant can't come back for another TIF or something else. This is it. We're done.
Okay. Any other questions?
Um, I'd like to offer the motion to approve Resolution number E, twenty nineteen dash zero one-three, that allows for consent and estoppel certificate for tax increment financing district number twenty-one, the soils district at South Bridge.
A motion on the floor. Is there a second? Seconded by Member Mars.
Mr. President, I'll second that motion.
Discussion, any other discussion? Discussion, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Uh, item four B, letter of intent to MF, MWF Properties for EDA-owned site. Mr. Kurski?
Mr. President and Board members, this is for the roughly three-point acre site that remains out in the, uh, West End for the site that the EDA currently owns. The other properties, um, are either all under contract or have been closed on, so Doggy Doo's is in the front and is well under construction right now. Um, North Star, uh, Mental Health Facilities is the next property. They have built their first phase, um, and the other properties, under contract to Opus, who plans on doing plans over the wintertime and starting construction in the spring. So this was the last site that we have left. MWF, as many of you know, is doing the project next to Target. Um, Sarah's and Flats, they're finishing up their second building right now, and so they thought this was a great location. It would be in the midst of, um, a pretty tight labor area, so people could walk to work, and they approached us and had it off on the table. If you approve this, we would then bring back a final contract and do the necessary legal notices, uh, to sell the property.
Questions of staff? Member Mars?
Mr. President, so three point eight acres for five hundred, that's about, about a buck and a quarter an acre, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. That's a very good price in today's market. Is that correct?
Uh, Mr. President and Board members, so that is about what we've been getting out there. I believe we sold the adjacent site for a hundred and twenty-five thousand an acre.
Okay. And follow-up question, Mr. President?
Go ahead, please.
So, um, currently zoned B one and would need to be rezoned to R four, which would be a down zoning, correct?
It, right now in, um, Mr. President, Board members, in B one, you can have a mixed-use project. They would be strictly doing a residential project, so it would be probably, and the representative is here from MWF, but they could probably get up to about a hundred units an acre there. I mean, a hundred units on the three point eight acres.
Right. I can, I just, with the comp plan twenty forty, I just view that that would be a down zoning, though. In my, in my method, math, it would be, but, okay.
Any other questions of staff? Any other questions? What is the direction, Mr., Member Mars?
Um, I'll offer a motion to direct staff to negotiate a contract with MWF for the sale of this property for the sum of five hundred thousand, and to advertise said sale on the Shakka Valley News for staff to proceed with the rezoning process.
Second.
A motion and a second by Contras. Uh, any other discussion? Discussion, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Passes four to one. Uh, item four C. This is the transfer of funding from facade improvement program to feasibility study for the Innovation Center. Mr. Kurski?
Members, so, um, currently we have just over four hundred thousand dollars in the facade loan program, and you can see this year, I think we've done one, I think we did one last year. What we're proposing tonight is the, uh, feasibility study, which is on the city council agenda, is a hundred thousand dollars. The CDA has already pledged thirty thousand dollars. The EDA budget already had eighteen thousand five hundred dollars budgeted for this year, which leaves fifty-one thousand five hundred dollars. We're also, um, looking at the potential for architectural engineering, um, fees as part of the feasibility study, so we're requesting an eighty thousand dollar transfer that would cover the balance and the, um, architectural engineering fees.
Questions of staff? Member Brennan?
Um, do we have any upcoming loan applications for the, uh, facade program?
Um, Mr. Pres-
That would affect balance of the?
Mr. President, Board members, um, there are some buildings we would hope would come in someday soon, um, downtown, but we don't have any pending applications.
Okay.
Member Mars?
We, the facade program, we fund that annually at about one twenty-five, is that correct?
Mr. President, Board members, so, um, a couple of years, it was at one fifty. I believe last year, we settled on a hundred, um, for this year, and that comes out of the EDA special levy.
And we fund it in varying amounts, I see, a little bit, but with no consideration to the stockpiling of the balance. Is that correct? I mean, the biggest year I've ever seen here has been a hundred grand.
Mr. President, Board members-
Annual basis.
I think, um, some of your bigger years, back in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, you were probably at a hundred and fifty thousand a year. Um, but I think that there are just two issues I see. I think property taxes have increased substantially downtown, so there's not been turnover in the buildings, because they've gotten pretty expensive. And two, the buildings that are left are pretty expensive to renovate. Um, the bakery is one of the buildings that comes to mind. Um, that whoever ends up buying that someday, that's gonna be a very expensive project. And then there's the old automotive piece across from the post office, that's another building that'll be pretty expensive. So I think the point of entry has gotten pretty high for both purchasing and rehab, and there are not many people in the market, I think, that are willing to take that risk right now.
Yeah. My point there, just to, I get what you're saying, and it's kinda, the balance is getting up there, and, you know, I'm, in, in regard to the Innovation Center, I think, uh, this is a fantastic project to, to understand more for, um, the feasibility study, understand another stepping point. Um, so I'm certainly not opposed to the use, transfer of these funds, but I just, it caught me there on the facade with that much money in that fund, and then I think we've only seen one application yet, yet this year, so...
And I think we did discuss, you know, it, we haven't talked, uh, on the, our notice here, it says the balance is four hundred thousand dollars, so for those at home. Um, we had talked about utilizing that fund in different ways, and we just haven't sat down and talked about it. But, uh, Mr. Lehman, you had a comment?
Mr. President, a couple of comments. And the first comment I have is, you know, we talked, we've been talking about this for quite a while, but the federal EDA has, they don't wanna fund any part of the studies, uh, but they wanna consider funding the building. And when I read the word "consider," that's not a, it's not a guarantee in my eyes. It's a maybe. And that coupled with where, you know, if this is such a great idea, where is all these partners that you would think would be out there helping us out at this point? So we're, we're lacking these partners that we should be having, that no doubt, if it's built and successful, will wanna utilize it. Um, so that's kinda disheartening. And, you know, I realize right now, we're just doing a study part of it. I'm not necessarily opposed to that, but I'm gonna have a problem if we come into a eight, nine million dollar building with nobody helping us to build it. So I don't wanna get too far ahead in this, because we just don't know where it's gonna lead.
And Mr. , Mr. President and Board members, I think that's kinda why everyone's sitting on the edge. Um, when we get to the council item, we can talk about so, how some of those projects were funded, but I think the CDA is in at the maximum they're allowed for this kind of study. And we had expected the EDA was gonna fund it, and they actually sent a letter after, we started this back in April, and they sent a letter a couple of weeks ago and said, "We just sent you a letter saying we're not gonna fund you, but don't panic. Give us a call." We called, and they said, "The good news is, you're not eligible for building funding, but you are right now, and we're willing to consider funding eighty percent." So typical EDA projects, limited by federal law at a fifty percent, but for this particular project, they're looking at a potential eighty percent, and that's a hundred percent grant. And so they have not done any projects in this area, so it will move us up the list, but it really depends on us working with them on the feasibility study, which we've been sending the information, and I think so far, they've been pretty supportive.
Mr. Reynolds?
Mr. Rose, you wanted to add something?
Yeah, well, Counselor Lehman has a, Mr. Lehman.
Wasn't there, um, who was it that was gonna partner in part of this? Mankato State or something? What happened with Mankato State?
So, Mr. President, Board members, um, university, Minnesota State University of Mankato, eh, we have a, um, memorandum of understanding with them. They're a potential tenant, operator, assister on this project, but they're gonna be a major player in helping the consultant come up with what the market is, along with the Live, Learn, and Earn group that broke off from scale. That is all the other, um, technical colleges in the area, um, along with a lot of the businesses. I think that, once we know what it is, I think it'll be easier to find whether it's feasible or not.
Member Mars?
Oh, Mr. Rose, just waiting in line.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to, uh, make sure, excuse me, Mr. President, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that, uh, uh, staff is actively working with members of the downtown community to try to convince them to, uh, uh, take advantage of the facade improvement program and to, uh, spiff up their particular, uh, buildings and, uh, you know, as, as there are a couple large players in the downtown area that have yet to take advantage of that, that, uh, uh, you know, if that was to occur, uh, you know, that, that is part of the reason we have the healthy balance that we have in that particular, uh, uh, fund. I think it's very relevant that once those major players are off the table, then we take a look at the funding stream and, and, and/or recognize what the, or reevaluate the boundaries of the program, and, uh, you know, that's certainly something that we'll do, uh, uh, when that happens in the future.
Member Mars?
Just a follow-up on Counselor Lehman's, uh, comments and just to fleeky, you know, uh, the federal, uh, the feds saying they wanna be, help us out later, but there's no guarantee. But I think, where are the other partners? Um, obviously, you see Scott County here and the CDA, at least on the feasibility study, in for a third. Um, I think everybody's waiting for this document, 'cause that's gonna lay out some parameters, have some rough costs, and everybody will know where they stand and how they can be involved and, and play an important role with that. But I think this feasibility study will, rather than, oh, how much is a building, how much is it gonna cost to operate, things like that, that, you know, we're taking, taking guesses. Uh, I think this will better define that, and I think there's some partners around that are pretty excited about this opportunity and, uh, want more information.
Counselor Lehman?
Chair, I don't disagree with that, however. I would point out that if we're trying to get partners within the markets themselves, whether it's Dakota County or Hennepin County Tech, um, one side of me says they don't want the competition, because it takes away from their personal bottom line, and the other side of me says, we're centrally located, and you would think that they would want to be in this market. So, we're kinda, we're kinda on that fence area. Sorry.
Mr. President, Board members, I think Live, Learn, and Earn has been working on this, uh, from when it was part of scale to now for about ten years, and has never really gotten what the answer is. I think that this is an opportunity to see where the market is, who's gonna serve. One of the things you'll find out, and we can discuss when we get into the contract, institutions of higher learning typically do not pay for their space. It's subsidized other ways, because they're, given the market today particularly, they're barely getting by on their tuition, and I think that having a communal space for all of those institutions you mentioned, I think, might actually save some money from their overhead and operations, which they pay. So a good example is, um, DCTC had a facility in Burnsville in a shopping mall, which ended up costing them a lot of money, and they pulled out of that lease. I think getting everyone together to look at a, a kinda universal space where they all could come and, and use, I think would save a lot on their overhead and operations, which is really the thing that's kept them out of this market. And so I think one of the things the feasibility study's gonna come back on is some creative ways. I mean, we visited a facility in Wisconsin where the university doesn't pay any rent, but they run the facility. So the facility's actually covering its debt service, because the university has all their staff there running the facility.
Member Lehman?
Who pays for the insurance and the capital outlay on the improvements to the building?
From, from the, well, if we get the eighty percent match, the, there won't be that much, because it'll be the twenty percent, but the tenants, there are residents in this facility that pay. This is not a place where everybody goes for free.
Okay. And how I envisioned it, and this is pre-study and everything, but we have had a lot of, uh, business partners in industry and commerce out there that want someplace to teach people and bring, bring them up to the level of where they can employ them. Uh, this may be an opportunity for them to use it for maybe just off-site training, but also some of that technical training that they're looking for. Um, this area could be por, a portion of that, and it could be more, but I think we need to have the feasibility study, and to go back to your earlier point, nobody wants to fund a study, but the, they'd be interested once we have something that's actually tang, tangible that they can work with, so that's my point on it. Member Brennan?
I agree with, um, member, or, or President Whiting. Um, I think there is a lot of excitement in, on this possibility, and I think having a feasibility, feasibility study will just have the documents saying, this is what we're planning on, and come and join us. And, um, I know that, um, speaking for scale, um, that they've been excited, um, and I think there's others in the community that have shown great excitement for it. Um, so I think it's, like I said, a great opportunity for us.
Member Mars?
Mr. President, I'll offer a motion to transfer eighty thousand dollars of, from the facade improvement program to the fund for the city's portion of the feasibility study and architecture work for the proposed Innovation Center.
A second.
A motion and a second on the floor. Further discussion? Discussion, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Item four D, consent and, of assignment of contract for private development.
Mr. President, Board members, this is, um, all we're doing is enclave development was who the original agreement was with for the redevelopment of the City Hall site. They have set up an LLC. Um, this is just transferring their rights as enclave into their LLC. That's actually a Minnesota corporation that's gonna develop that site.
So basically, a name change, nothing else changes?
Correct. And it, this also allows them, they have limited partners- And this also allows them, they have limited partners that they will bring in for the equity. This allows them to come into that LLC.
Any further questions of staff? Seeing none, Mr. Mars?
Mr. President, I offer a motion to adopt Resolution E 2019-014 that assigns the enclave contract for private developer to Deco Shockley Limited LLC for the redevelopment of 129 Homestreet, the former site of Shockley City Hall.
We have a motion and a second by contras. Any further discussion? Member Lehman?
Mr. President, I have a question on the third whereas in the resolution. In order to make the minimum improvements economically feasible, the authority agreed to provide a grant to enclave in the amount of $2.1 million for the public redevelopment cost. This is defined in the contract.
Mr. Kurski?
Mr. President, Board members, so that, the city is doing the, basically a TIF loan. I can't, Mr. Darren can help me on where it came from, but basically, there was an agreement on the majority of council that we would get 4 percent back, and it was a pretty solid return. And so, unlike other deals we had, the TIF funds actually are coming directly to the city.
So, it's not a grant?
It's a grant, and that we're giving them upfront that money, but we're getting repaid through the TIF payments. So, yes, it is a grant, and that we're giving them the money.
In the soil remediation effort, the developer took the loan and provided the receipts for the maximum amount of the fix for those soils, 1.3 million in our latest example. In this, the developer took the loan, we're only going to pay up to 1.3 from the TIF dollars. Here, we're the bank, so when those TIF dollars flow through, we will recapture that to pay ourselves back with interest.
A healthy 4 percent.
Any further questions? Motion on the floor. Discussion again, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Passes four to one. Item 5A is the EDA bill list. Is there any questions on the bill list?
I just want to, I had a couple of questions on this. Mr. President, in regard to actually, the first page, there's some, you know, half a million dollars here of two properties for the riverfront. And I had asked staff that, when they close on their construction loan, probably early next spring, we will get repaid these dollars back into the EDA. Is that correct?
Mr. President, Board members, you approved an amendment to their private development agreement last month, I believe. And basically, we're fronting that at 4 percent interest. When their construction loan closes, we get paid out.
Yep.
Any other questions on the bill list? All right, item number six. Member Mars?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, September 17, 2019, at 7:00 PM.
A motion and a second by contras. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand in adjournment.
We will reconvene the City of Shockley City Council meeting for September 3, 2019, coming out of our EDA meeting. And we are on 10A1, award a contract to the HRNA for feasibility study for the innovation center. Michael, welcome back.
Mayor and council members, I thought I would just quickly go through a couple of pictures. So, this is the project that Bob Giolis did, that this is actually two EDA grants. They gave $3 million for the first building and $3 million for the second building. So, these buildings are owned by Clemson University's foundation. The university has private partners in these buildings that actually pay the cost of overhead and operations and pay the university back for its portion of its investment. So, Councilmember Lehman mentioned business partners. They are able to get BMW, for instance, is in one of these buildings, and they do all of their quality control testing for products that come in. So, they actually pay to build out a lab. And then, this is also a foreign landing zone for foreign companies that have not established a market yet in the United States. They rent space in here. If they grow, they go into other buildings on this campus. This is the frontier at the Research Triangle Park. Similar, in the Research Triangle Park, there are a number of very large corporations, including Red Hat, who's a major software company. This is an outpost, basically, they have here in this building, where students from the university work with the business community on ideas that the business community doesn't necessarily want to invest a lot of money in. The business community covers the cost of operations. The university provides all the support staff. This is in Rochester. This building just opened. This is the Discovery Building in downtown Rochester. This is supported by the Mayo Clinic and a private developer, Mortenson, the private developer, built this. And this is a research incubator in the medical device, medical technology area. This is actually in Flagstaff, Arizona. Their slogan is, "We help entrepreneurs build and scale successful companies." They've actually been so successful here, they actually opened a satellite office in Chandler, Arizona, so 100 miles away. And basically, Flagstaff is where a lot of the space programs were launched, a lot of the experiments were done on some of the craters there. So, they actually have a program there called Moonshot, where people that have existing companies that want to take them to the next level, come to this facility. There's a company in here that went from three scientists to 300 employees, and is now a worldwide company. And they've moved out of here and into a building in the city. This is next, in Greenville. This is where your high-growth company needs a place to grow. A similar concept, they actually have grown to three buildings, and they actually run an industrial incubator, a software incubator, and a new technology incubator. This program is funded by the city, the county, and the business community. There's about 20 companies that contribute to the overhead and operations, and actually, the building is run by a private sector operator. So, HRNA has been involved in various stages of projects all over the country. They did work on the comprehensive plan, and one of the things they found from talking to the business community and the real estate community, that there was really a need for this kind of startup, high-tech space. So, they actually had the original idea when it came out of the comp plan, and then they saw that, for 10 years, scale's been kind of working on the idea of a post-secondary education. You can see all of these have some relationship to that. Clemson, their business school works with the next companies. In fact, one of the business school classes, three of the entrepreneurs got on Shark Tank and got a major investment from Mark Cuban and have launched the company. So, I think the university component's pretty critical, because they have that kind of professors on one end, but students that have a lot of innovative ideas. And having people willing to mentor them and work with them and go out into the markets, I think, really important and critical to the success of these programs.
All right. Questions of staff? Councilman Lehman?
Two questions. Will the federal EDA be invited into this process?
Mayor and council, and I have to ask for, what do you mean by that?
Well, if we're going to do a study, and that's what they do on a federal level, maybe if they're part of the process, they can continue on as partners when we want to build it.
So, mayor and council, they have asked to review the final scope of work to make sure that it meets their funding guidelines, because they want to make sure that whatever the end product is, is fundable. Almost all the ones I showed you were EDA projects. In fact, Clemson got two EDA grants, which is unheard of in the country, at $3 million each. So, luckily, two of the people on this team wrote those grants, so.
And the second question, mayor, is, the, should this memo says, should this feasibility study prove itself out, staff will be engaging an architectural firm and, to put together building concept, design, layout, and cost estimates. Is that an additional dollar amount above what we're approving?
Yes, mayor and council, if you go back to the EDA budget transfer we just did, we budgeted, I think, $28,500 to hire an architect and engineering firm to do that work. The EDA will not fund a project that doesn't have at least concept and a preliminary cost, because they're picking up 80 percent of those costs. So, HRNA does not do that. But there are two or three firms in the Minneapolis market that have done incubators, both locally and nationally, and we will engage with one of them.
Okay.
More questions of staff? More questions of staff? If not, Councilwoman Whiting?
I'll move to approve entering into a contract with HRNA for the amount not to exceed $100,000 for a feasibility study for the innovation center that includes a possible business incubator and post-secondary education component.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Discussion, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all. Moving forward, 10A2, request to ask Scott County to modify agreements on Marystown Road to allow right-in, right-out. Michael, hi.
Mayor and council, so, this was before my time, but you all entered into an agreement with Scott County that basically, and I believe it was in return for the right-in, right-out that is at High V, you took back the road, but you basically would never do allow any other access points. Trident Development has the rights to the school site and to the family-owned site on the corner, and they proposed an apartment complex and two medical office buildings. They are in the hunt with a potential user for one of those buildings. They like the site, but they feel without an additional right-in, right-out on Marystown Road, it'll make the site pretty difficult. One of the difficulties is, right now, it ends the Lusitano at a cul-de-sac, and so, all the traffic coming in at the larger intersection would have to go, basically, through the school traffic and past a daycare. And so, the hope is, so, engineering's taken a preliminary look at this, and if you look at the areas in yellow with some reworking of this design, it would no longer be a private drive, but this would become a city street. So, you'd have a city street, Lusitano, that would run through the project and exit at that right-in, right-out. And we'd have another city street that would be a right-in, right-out on 17th Avenue. So, what we're asking tonight is to go back to the county to ask whether they would be willing to amend this for a right-in, right-out. And the developer is here tonight to answer questions.
All right. Questions of staff? Councilman Lehman?
Okay, first question is, is it, are we asking to amend it on 17th Avenue and 15, or one or the other, or both?
Mayor and council, it's both. So, right now, a right-in, right-out is allowed on 17th. That was predetermined a long time ago. The one that is basically prohibited, there's actually, in real estate, we used to call a spite strip that runs down Marystown Road, prohibiting access except to the highway ramp. So, we would ask the county to reconsider and allow that, basically, a new city street to have a right-in, right-out there.
Then the second question is, the distance between 15 and the right-in, right-out on 17th Avenue is how far? Do we know what that distance is?
Steve?
Councilmember, what was the?
The distance from 15 to the right-in, right-out on 17th Avenue, is that an eighth mile?
Mayor and council members, it's less than 700 feet, so it falls within the 760 feet that was stated in the agreement.
Okay. And then, the follow-up is, what's the distance from the right-in, right-out on 15 to 17th Avenue? Close to the same, a little less than 700?
It's more. I would say that's probably, just based on this drawing, probably closer to 900 to 1,000 feet.
It looks pretty close to the one on 17th Avenue, or a little bit shorter than the one on 17th Avenue on my map.
No, I agree. And the county has some spacing, but I think they've loosened up a little bit over the years. I mean, obviously, the High V is a good example. You know, I know that the developer out at South Bridge fought for 10 years for their right-in, right-out over by the movie theater and spacing with that. But hopefully, that, this agreement, I remember when that was signed, and they said, "No major road cuts outside of 17th Avenue," and that. But the logistics aspect of it, for development.
Here's my rationale for asking the questions I'm asking. I have no problem going back and asking the county for this, but I'd like us to have a little bit of flexibility with the county on the 15 side, because I can see their argument saying it's got to be at least the same distance or as the 17th Avenue side. Okay? But I understand that we're looking at an off-ramp, too. So, I think if we, if we take the position that we're a little bit flexible on the west side on 15, that might be a little more amenable to them.
Mayor and council, I'll defer to the city engineer, but I know Mindot has some distance off of their ramp that they prohibit access points, so.
Right.
Other questions of staff? Steve?
Mayor and council members, just to reiterate that, so, Mindot has access control beyond their right-of-way. So, it, they have access control almost right to the north part of where that driveway is located, and then it's the county's decision for access control. So, we can amend the agreement, but it still will take the county to approve this access. It's not city's jurisdiction north of there, even though Marystown is a city road, Mindot does have access control.
So, mayor and council, this is a little unusual, in that we have a street that got turned back, that basically, Mindot and the county control access to.
All right, Councilman Brennan?
Is there any plans for the 17th Avenue and Marystown Road interchange? Like a lighter roundabout, or?
Mayor and council members, in our capital improvement plan, we have a to-be-determined project, which is a future project pending funding. And it has four back-to-back, to-back, to-back roundabouts at, along Marystown Road, at 17th Avenue, the two trunk highway, 169 ramps, both the north and the south, and also at Veerling. So, that, that project is meant to calm that corridor down with roundabouts. We expect the speeds to go down, a lot more channelization and calmer driving. Without those roundabouts, I would be recommending against this right-in, right-out only that we're asking for. To really get this access point for this private drive from this development, we need to have those roundabouts in place. Otherwise, it's, it's not a great place for a right-in, right-out only. So, we, we need all of those things to happen to accommodate this development and this access point.
I have one more question. Could you, not really a follow-up, I have a different question. Could you point out where Ladybug is?
It's right here.
Thank you. When we approved that, when I was on the planning commission, I think a big discussion was the amount of traffic that would be entering to that highest full access point and down into this future area. And we had concerns because of the school there, and also the Ladybug, and that Ladybug children walk over to the school. So, I think any way that we can to minimize that, that walking and that traffic through that area would be really beneficial.
Good background. Councilmember Whiting?
Thank you. Steve, when you talk to the county, you'll be having that conversation about those roundabouts while we're having conversations about this right-in, right-out, so they're all aware what your plan is.
Councilmembers, correct, yes.
And I think the look, nature of this area is going to obviously change with the west end and this, you know, proposed situation here. You're coming from a very rural environment when you come north, and then, as soon as you come across a bridge, you've got High V. And, you know, I live over there, they come barreling across that, but I, I really think that, as we develop there to the south, with the Benedictine Health Center, all that, the characteristics of that road, along with the roundabouts, will change. They'll start slowing down much more to the south of this area, which I think will, and as it urbanizes, will give a different feel and look. This only here on the, on Marystown, only, obviously, it affects the northbound traffic, so. But certainly, we, if this passes, we can work and lobby the county. Councilmember Lehman?
I think you got conflicting lefts on the, on off-ramps on 16 I think you got conflicting lefts on the on-off ramps on 16169. If you're trying to get on, you're making, and you're going south, you're making a left. If you're getting off and want to go south, you're making a left, and these two lefts aren't driving together. So I totally get what you're saying about that. Maybe one is contingent on the other.
All right.
That might be a good traffic discussion to have.
Councilor Brennan?
I would like to make a motion, if I can, to approve Resolution Number R 2019-095 to ask Scott County to modify turnback agreement for county highway number 15 to allow right-in, right-out for the development of the adjacent property.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Whiting. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right. For item number 11A, review of our 2020 preliminary budget levy, we will move to the lower level. Councilmember Lehman?
Motion for recess.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? It'll take a five-minute recess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. We'll reconvene the City of Shakopee City Council meeting for September 3, 2019. We are in a workshop to discuss the preliminary budget and levy for 2020. Mr. Reynolds?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. As a reminder, this is a workshop. There's no formal action to be taken. This is a discussion. Please interrupt. Please have a free-flowing exchange of ideas. That's what this is all about. With that being said, Mr. Nelson, in one of his final swung songs for the organization, and I are going to go through this presentation, and again, if you have questions, now's the time, and also any suggestions or changes. Mr. Nelson?
Let me interrupt you right there.
Yep.
No, go ahead.
I guess, actually, this is my slide.
Oh, okay.
So it's really important, and we say this every year, we as the city can only affect what is quote-unquote "in our box." A lot of times taxpayers will look at their tax bills and kind of attach their overall taxing issues with the congregate of everything that's there, and that, you know, whether it be school district, county, and the assorted miscellaneous other taxing bodies that Mr. Lehman and I are always looking forward to trying to figure out just exactly what they are. I really wish that they would be required to have those on the tax bill and actually put their name on it and put it out. However, we currently...
That council's got their name on theirs, but the rest of them...
Yeah. So currently do not have. So we can only affect those things that we have the ability to affect, and, you know, we're basically talking about our piece of the pie, our box. As you'll recall, 2020, the financial objectives are pretty much the same financial objectives that we've had since I've been here, except for the last one, which is increased bond rating, which will be more about, hopefully, at the end of this week. But that being said, you as a council have traditionally looked for low taxes, which, by the way, once again reminding everyone, that we are one of the lowest tax communities in the metro area. Continued financial stability, that may all go in the hole as soon as Darren walks out the door, but I guess we'll stay tuned. Stable tax rate, not only has our tax rate been stable, but in the last three, four years, it has fallen, and it will fall again this year. I read an interesting comment online about somebody who couldn't understand how we can have a falling tax rate, or excuse me, yeah, have a falling tax rate and have taxes increase. And the reality is, is that it's not the individual taxes that increase, and we'll go into that in a few minutes, it is the fact that the pie is growing. So the overall taxes that are coming into the organization does increase, but the individual pie is not changed. From my personal objectives, these are the objectives I've had since we've been here, and we talked about a little bit about it earlier. True fiscal transparency, once again, if you don't speak Russian, and we're speaking Russian to you in regards to the financial condition of the city and the budget, then you have no idea what we're talking about. We have tried very hard over the last three and a half years or so to ensure that we are speaking in a language that normal people understand, and that way they can actually look at the documents that we're giving and figuring out what we're doing with their tax dollars. And finally, the budget reflects how we spend tax dollars. Many of you have heard me say this before, it's a higher moral responsibility for me when it comes to tax dollars. It is not a voluntary transaction. You're not going into a store and paying $20 and getting a shirt that you voluntarily do. We're taking this out of people's pockets. They have to know what we're doing with it, and we have to be very clear in how that money is being used. So the process and both the use. Darren, this is you.
I can be.
Was this me, too?
This is you, too, but...
Oh, okay.
Go ahead if you want to.
Okay, so the impact of this year's budget levy request is that, once again, the tax rate is lowering from 34.9% to 33.9%, which essentially means this, again, trying to speak English to English speakers, if a resident's home value stays the same, very important piece, if your valuation goes up, we can't control that, that's not in our box, but if it stays the same, an average-value home will have a tax decrease of $25, or about 2.9%. With an increase of home value of 6.7%, an average-value home will have a tax increase of $39, or about 4.6%. So that's the difference between no increase in your value and an increase in your value. This is the third year of lowering the tax rate, this is the fourth year of lowering the tax rate in the last five years, and once again, we continue to be among the lowest tax, go back to that, Darren, tax communities in the metro. That's so incredibly important. Last year, we gave a tax cut. This year, we have a moderate tax increase. We are still among the lowest tax communities in the metro area.
As far as the city tax is concerned?
As far as the city's tax, our box. Yes, this is our box.
Last one for you, I think.
So when we look at our 2020 City Council financial objectives, once again, they're realized. Low taxes, the 2020 budget includes a marginal tax increase that equates to the same individual tax liability as 2018. In other words, taking our tax cut that we had last year, and even with the tax increase that we have this year, we're still going back to the taxes that were around in 2018. That's an amazing achievement. And that's $39 decrease in 2019 and a $39 increase in 2020. They worked out to be the exact same thing. Continued financial stability, a stable tax rate, again, continuing three-year trend of lowering the tax rate with the four years in the last five, increased tax capacity, growth of 10.7% this year. What a joy it is to be in a community that has that kind of growth, because ladies and gentlemen, that's how we keep taxes low. If your pie isn't growing, you're in trouble.
It'll have to end at some point.
Well, and, not to get on the soapbox, but you're right, counselor. Remember when I started talking many years ago about the growth curve? And when I was hired for the job, I talked about figuring out where we were in the growth curve, because it's great when you're going up here, but when you're up on this side of the growth curve, it's kind of scary, because you can't see it normally until it's already passed. And then, when you're here, that's when the decisions that you have made back here are so critically important, because that's what will keep you stable here. Now, we do know that in the west end, we're growing, but still, we have to be constantly cognizant of where we are on that growth curve, and continue to understand by looking at our permits and our revenues that come in from our infrastructure improvements. Those pieces are essentially where you can judge, and it's very nice right now, but, you know, hey, guess what? A recession happens, then we have to make sure that we're making the correct decisions, because there may be a temporary law. Now, the long-term prognosis for Shakopee is growth. As we continue to look to the west end of town, we're one of the few communities that still has some buildable land, and we simply have a lot of amenities. People want to live here. And by the way, we're one of the lowest tax municipalities in the metro area. The mayor and I, last year, when we went around during a night, actually heard people say, you know, when we asked, why did you come here? Well, I can't afford this house in Edina. I can't afford this house in Burnsville. I can't afford it here. And that's an important factor as well. So that growth curve is incredibly important to always take a look at and make sure that we're kind of keeping true to recognizing, you know, our future, and there might be some sputs and sputters depending on the overall general economy, but, you know, we're still strong in the long term.
Two comments on that. In our household, we try to look at, if you could take the house that I live in, and my wife and I try to take our house and put it in a different community, Eden Prairie, Edina, Burnsville, anywhere, Prior Lake, and look at the tax base off of that value, right? Because it's all based off of value, and I think Shakopee does have some of the lower taxes from the city aspect compared to what the value of your house is. We do that exercise almost every year. Also, speaking to my peer group of mayors around the, actually, the state of Minnesota, the, I certainly would take the challenges of growth over the challenges of contraction or no growth. Those cities are seeing their tax rate go up, the taxes going up because they have no growth to distribute that. Actually, in some communities, those pies are getting smaller, yet the services are the same, or the squad car breaks down, or the fire truck breaks down, and then what have you got with the same or a contraction of your base? And I'd rather have the challenges of growth than the challenges of contraction.
And finally, increased bond rating, setting the stage for a AAA bond rating. We have our bond rating call coming up this week. So we're setting that stage. We will soon find out in a couple of weeks whether or not we are going to join the ranks of the highest bond rating in the nation, which I believe that we have a good chance of achieving. We achieved the second highest about two and a half, three years ago, and so this will be the capstone to Darren's career, and if it doesn't happen, it's all his fault.
I'll take that blame. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Just want to go over the budget calendar a little bit. We do have two new council members that are the first time through this, so I want to give you guys kind of overview of what's going to happen from here to the end of the year. Obviously, we met about our CIP back in August. That'll be coming forth in our next meeting in September as well, with our final CIP looking for adoption on that. At that same meeting, we'll be working on or getting resolution support for the preliminary tax levy and budget for both the city and the EDA. That's the time where we set that preliminary levy, the highest potential levy that we can have, that gets then extracted into the truth and... that gets then extracted into the truth and taxation notices that come out in your mail in November from the county. So from, in September through November, staff will be working on the details. We'll have the preliminary levy set, we'll work on the details. Bring forward a final budget to, a draft final budget to a work session in, usually November, we do that timeframe, once that's set. Then we'll go through the details of the budget and give you a chance to look at everything at that level. Tonight, we're looking at kind of that 30,000-foot level of what are the big budget implications that are driving the tax levy at this point in time. Then in December 3rd, we'll hold the one public, the one required public meeting regarding the budget, and that's required by state statute. That'll be on December 3rd, and then, go ahead, Mr. Reynolds.
Yeah, and just a reminder that Darren initiated when he came in, the public meetings to talk about the budget before we even started this process. And we obviously will continue those meetings in the future. But this is the only public meeting that Darren mentioned that's required by the state. The problem is, for the public, I mean, if you want to come in and you have the greatest idea on the planet, or if you have some concerns, at this point, it's very difficult, and maybe it's designed that way, I don't know, but it's very difficult to make any changes to the budget. We want to provide the public the opportunity before we even start looking at numbers, to kind of come in. And councillor Brennan was active in coming to those meetings in the past, and you know, it's an important part of what we do.
And actually, there's a lot of cities that approve their final budget that same night as well, too, and that.
Yeah.
And then from my standpoint, that kind of goes against my philosophy of transparency, is that approving this budget the same night you have that public hearing, well, what happens if you hear a great idea, or something that needs to be changed, or whatever, you don't have any opportunity to change it at that point. You're just going through the motions at that point in time. Granted, our next meeting is only two weeks later, but we still have an opportunity there to make changes if something were to arise. If you approve it that same night, you know, what is the perception there on that end of it, so.
So the first time I went through these things, it's like, we're talking about that budget again and again and again, so it comes up quite a bit. You think we're almost through it, but there's a lot of steps in the game.
Right. So that's the budget calendar, and everything will wrap up with certification to the county and to the state by the December 30th, so. So staff has proposed budgets with minimal or no tax impacts to residents for the past three years. In fact, for taxes payable 2019, you may have heard the city had a tax cut or a tax levy was reduced. I did hear that through the kind of grapevine a little bit, but.
Did you want to make that announcement again?
But similar to, but similar to all cities, City Shakopee is experiencing budget pressures, and most noticeably in our infrastructure maintenance or construction and maintenance, as well as our general personnel costs. We're a service organization, obviously, personnel drives what we do. That's a big driver of our costs. Fortunately, these pressures are mitigated by our previous work to financially position our budgets and by right sizing our operations. Just as Mr. Reynolds mentioned, the steps we're taking on the growth curve on the way up are set ourselves up for that long-term financial stability. So this year's budget focus focuses on maintaining those operational service levels, which includes an infusion of tax dollars dedicated to maintaining the street infrastructure. You may recall during the CIP discussion, we're dedicating additional $500,000 right into the capital improvement fund for those projects. We're seeing increases in construction costs, material costs, those types of things on that end of it, and those dollars are desperately needed there. And the levy also includes an investment in our regional park development as a result of the Parks Trails and Recreation Master Plan, and also the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. So taking that momentum from that plan and infusing it into our tax or into our budget for 2020. As Mr. Reynolds also mentioned, this budget also continues to focus on the fiscal transparency, long-term financial stability, reflecting how we spend our tax dollars. And that's really where we've tightened up our budgets for the last three years, is that we're no longer budgeting for the what-if, or there's something that may or may not happen. We're being transparent about it and upfront with the council about it, that we're budgeting for our needs. And if something arises, like last winter with our, you know, I wouldn't say 14 snow events, but it was probably more than that, that went into April, that's an area that we're keeping a close eye on, because we have yet the first half of the winter to deal with this fall and early winter on that end of it. So that's where we want to make sure that communication is open on, from staff and council. So with that, staff has recommended increasing the city's preliminary levy, 5.98% or 1.15 million. And as Mr. Reynolds also mentioned, that new growth over the last three years, we've increased our value of $1.2 billion to over $6 billion. That's, that's a pretty remarkable number. That's a good number for a AAA bond rating. But more importantly, over 20% of that number of that growth, that 1.2 million, 20% or 244 million is new growth. So that's new growth, new taxpayers coming into the pie to make the pie bigger for everyone. When you have just growth, when values are just increasing, the pie stays the same size. Your tax rate may go down, but you're still paying the same amount of taxes on that. But if you add new growth to the pie, it's getting bigger, reduces the tax implications for existing taxpayers. So here's an overview of the preliminary levy, of the proposed preliminary levy compared to the 2019 final levy. As you can see, the general fund is increasing about $460,000 or about 2.76% over last year. The general fund is our main operational fund. That's where 90% of our operations take place outside of, outside of our sanitary sewer and storm drainage operating expenditures, but this is where a majority of it takes place.
And so ultimately, what that means is that let's take the capital improvement plan off the table. If it wasn't for the necessary improvements that we're recommending for infrastructure, we would be less than 3% as far as the increase in this year's tax rate, or taxes.
Right. Actually, go ahead. That $700,000, that 500 from the capital improvement fund and 200 from the park development fund, actually comes from about 3.6% of that 5.9 or 5.86, and however you want to look at it, combined, when you combine the HR A levy in there as well, too. So it's that, those are those dedicated dollars going to specific projects, going to specific capital infrastructure needs to help kind of spur or infuse those areas at this point.
And just a quick reminder, some of those are County Road 42 project, but more importantly, we have the Canterbury projects going on. But probably the real important piece of that is the new program that we're starting, much like our sewer lining program many, many years ago, that'll extend the life of our sewers. This particular program is designed to extend the life of our streets. Now, do we have to spend this money now? No. But remember what I said about the growth curve and the decisions that we're making at this part of the curve, how important they are for when we end up here. By making this investment now, we're extending the life of these particular roadways, which means that we can extend them out past when they normally would be needed for a full reconstruction. If we can do that by an extra 10 years, that's a big deal. And so that's why we want to do this investment now. I would consider it a minimal investment based upon the returns we're going to get, but is it more money? Absolutely. But again, it's that investment we're making here on the growth curve to make sure that if we ever come up here earlier than we think we are, we're prepared.
Investments in the future.
I think that sewer lining project is a perfect example.
There are a few communities have done that, and it's remarkable. Hats off to this organization when that, I don't know, eight, 10 years ago, when they decided to do it, because it literally is extending the life of the sewers by 50 to 75 years, maybe even longer. That's striking.
They're trying that in Duluth now, the last couple of years, but they're finding that the, they waited so long that the infrastructure of the pipe is crumbling and can't support the injection aspect of the, to hold the, to hold it to form to make the inner part of it. And so I was, over the weekend, up north, and I was talking to a guy for the Western Lake Spear Sanitary District, and I said, "We're lining all our pipe." He goes, "Yeah, I wish I could do that. We're doing it where it's feasible, but some of our pipe is 80, 90, 100 years old, and it just crumbles."
Well, we're not lining all of our pipe. We have some that are unlineable.
No, right.
We can't.
Well, sure.
Because the stuff is gone. But the ones that are primed to be lined, we are lining.
Right, yes.
We've got rid of most of that orange bird.
Most of it, most of it.
And that project should be done next year, the sewer lining project.
One final note on this slide here is that the 2010 A Improvement Debt Service Line, you see that for 2020, there's $69,900 levied for that. This is the final year of that bond. That bond will be paid off in February of 2021. So we'll do the tax collection next year for that, and so that'll fall off next year. But we won't see a decrease in the total levy, because when we issued the 2016 abatement bond, that maturity was taken into consideration. So we want to, so we've got, they'll roll on top of the 2016 abatement bond, and we'll pay a little bit more principal next year on that bond. So the debt service levy will stay basically flat for 2021.
When does the 2016 ramp? When does it peak?
That would be the peak after that, that piece, that last 2010 bond matures, that'll peak up to the top.
So 21 will be the peak?
Probably 20, yep, 21 tax levy, yes, for payment in 2022.
And then it'll start dropping again?
It stays pretty flat, I believe, if I recall.
Can't remember either.
I'm doing long-range projections on our debt service, it seemed pretty flat, is that it, it got up to this. It ramped up for the last three, four, five years as we had some debt service roll off.
And do you recall if that was 20 or 30 years?
20, I believe. Yeah, it's not 30, it's definitely 20. So looking at our budget impact issues, I'll just kind of go over these quickly. Stop me if you want any more detail on it, because there is plenty of detail. Our COLA, or our cost of living adjustment, that is kind of an unknown at this point in time. Our three union contracts expire at the end of the year. I believe we started preliminary negotiations with two of those. Current contracts have called for 3% cost of living adjustments. This budget has been built with a 3% cost of living adjustment in there. It doesn't mean that that's what it is going to be going forward when those contracts get negotiated, but that's where it's been budgeted at this point in time. If there's any changes to that before now and the rest of the budget detail is done, we'll definitely update that, but that's where we're at on that end of it. Health insurance, a couple of years ago, we had some pretty big increases. We had about a 19% increase, I believe, for the 2019 plan year, or 2018 plan year. Last year, we were able to renegotiate our plan design a little bit, and our increase was only 1% last year. So we saw a nice reprieve from the previous year on that end of it, and this year, we're looking at about a 5% increase from the city side of things. So things have kind of leveled off a little bit. Hopefully, that continues into the future as well, too, because that's always one of those variables that can spike either with your experience rating, or just a change in the market, or whatever on that end of it.
And please don't forget that we have previously funded the ability to go to self-insurance program if we determine that the rates are such that it's beneficial to us to do so. Once again, we looked at that this year and determined with the percent increase that now was not that year. But that being said, that was an investment that was made several years ago, that if it comes out, we have another 19% increase, and we're going to seriously consider being self-insured, much like Scott County is.
Yeah, Scott County's been self-insured for years.
Yep.
Yeah, and I believe we set aside $600,000 for that a couple of years ago now. So that's sitting at a self-insurance internal service fund dedicated to that purpose, so. Police and fire pension contributions, 2018 legislature approved employee and employer contribution rates for both 2019 and 2020. So this is the second year of that legislation, and I believe that's about a $40-some-thousand additional employer cost at this point in time, too. The employee and the employer both pick up an increased percentage on that side of it. 2020 is a presidential election year. We didn't have elections in 2019, so that'll be added back into the budget. I believe Scott County is pushing out some of the early voting to us now. So we'll be doing that within the City of Shakopee rather than at the, at Scott County administration offices, so.
Do you have any election security budget items adding anything to that, or any components there that would change it, other than just being a presidential year?
The only thing that we're looking at is the increased cost for actually housing, early voting here at City Hall, which is 50 or 40.
It was 40, that was 40, 40-some-thousand dollars, 41,000, 43,500.
So that is an increased cost, and again, that's a decision we don't have anything we can do about. The county has determined that they're not going to do it, and they want to push it down to the cities, and so sign us up.
Are we on the equipment, isn't that correct?
We have the equipment, but we, we have some training that needs to occur yet, and then Lori, can you kind of give an idea of what?
So we are going to, but the equipment is so minor, and we should have it in-house already. The computers that we need to use for the presidential primary absentee voting period and all that, we have in-house. Printers for the labels for absentee voting are like 25 bucks, 30 bucks a piece. So the equipment part is not the issue, it's more of the added staff, the training. And because I've never, my department's never handled the absentee voting, early voting, we don't really have an idea of what that entails. So we're trying to be conservative on what we're, you know, anticipating. The state has got grant money that the county has been working to collect the numbers for reimbursement for the presidential nominating primary in March. And so there might be some recoup of some funds. I don't know what that's going to look like. That's all up in the air at this point, so.
We made a pretty significant investment in some of that electronic equipment.
Yeah. Yep, and right now, we have enough poll, or they're the tabulators that voters put their ballots in. We have enough of those for the precincts that we currently have. Part of the grant, there might be some equipment. I have asked for another machine down the road, just because we are needing to start preparing for the added population in the West End. As the West End develops, I'm going to need to have another polling location. And so, but at this point, I have enough of those tabulators. I have a couple extra if we have a problem with one or not. So we are able to use those tabulators for the absentee voting thing that we're now going to have to do. But that doesn't leave me a lot of room if there's a problem with equipment. So we're looking forward for those types of things, but we're hoping for grants on that.
And we'll also come back to talk about the plan once we have more information from the county, and then we can be sure that you're comfortable with what we're doing.
There were questions about the two precincts sharing one location, I think it was the police station.
There's only one precinct that's in the police station, and because it's in the room that it is, there's not really, we've never had any interaction between the business that's happening in the police department and the polls. So that's the first time and only time we've ever had a question, and there's never been an issue. So I think our plan is to continue to use that space, because we really, in the community, are limited in where we can have a polling location, so.
Can we make a small effort to minimize that interaction with maybe a, I'm thinking of a half-wall, roll-in divider thing or something?
Yeah, and we, well, what we actually did last time was basically to request that the police department not use the front entrance, and they normally don't. But just to take those issues totally off the table.
Right.
It must be, I just, I don't believe we're the only city that's going to be impacted on this, I think, Prior Lake, Savage, or.
All county cities will be impacted.
Right, so it's kind of a change from the county is, rather than having it all funneled into the governmental center up there, the counties are thinking, being more effective and efficient, have them spread out in the cities and their counties. There are some expenses, additional expenses in manpower and time. The technology is there, but this is not unique. It's more unique to the presidential aspect and the dispersment of the availability of where you can vote.
Yes, sir. Then finally, under our wages and benefits category, we're looking at, in the parks maintenance division, adding two additional staff there. These demands have, there's been increasing demands in our parks maintenance area. They've created a need to create, to add a parks foreman and a maintenance operator within this division. The addition of a foreman in this, in the park maintenance division would then mirror the personnel structure in the streets division as well. As you may recall, the city did add a streets maintenance operator for. As you may recall, the city did add a streets maintenance operator for this year, I believe it was, twenty nineteen, not twenty eighteen. And that was the last position that been added since like twenty fourteen within the maintenance division of, of streets and parks on that end of it. So we're looking at kind of mirroring the park side with the street side and there is a definite need for those, those needs on that end of it. So, and that impact would be about a hundred and ninety one thousand dollars a year for those two positions at this point. So that's in the, proposed at this point in time. And the nice thing about this, I did my slide presentation after Mr. Reynolds gave me some comments this morning and I realized that I needed to add a bunch of slides, so I did that late this afternoon without him knowing, so it's my, came my last errata, kind of add a little bit more to the budget presentation, but we'll go quick with it. Some other impact charge, impact issues, a major one is our internal rent charges. We've been talking about this for a couple of years, our equipment fund. We noticed this when we purchased our latest two pumppers, that those costs of those were about six hundred thousand dollars a piece. Well, we had purchased them twenty plus years ago for about three hundred thousand or three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we pay rent on the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar piece of equipment for twenty years and we go to replace it. We find out we only got three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the bank where we need six hundred thousand. So we took a concerted look at our long-term equipment, the equipment that has a lifetime of ten to twenty years, and said we really need to be depreciating that at a replacement value, not necessarily the historical cost of that item. And so we did that. It has a budget impact, it's not, it's not cheap, and so we decided to implement that over the course of four years. And I believe the impact to that, this is, twenty twenty will be the second year of that. And I believe that's about a sixty three thousand dollar impact just for the price of those replacement vehicles versus the historical cost on that. So that is a piece of that. From there, that exercise kind of spurred us to look at our other internal service funds. These internal service funds were, were created a number of years ago with the great intention of kind of taking the peaks and valleys of the tax levy, of being able to set aside money each year for different assets. And so when those assets come due for replacement or need a rehab or whatever, we have the funds set aside to pay for that. We don't have to spike the levy that year to pay for that improvement or for that equipment or whatnot. Problem is with, we really hadn't really, or we hadn't in a long time done an exercise to tie the costs of the buildings of the park assets into the IT equipment to actual cost drivers. And so for the instance, the park asset fund, we had just kind of said, okay, here's a preliminary amount, we're just going to put three hundred thousand dollars into the park asset fund and call it good. Well, we have a whole host of assets within all the parks. And so now we have tied to them all the replacement items, the park, not just the park equipment or the shelters, but the street lights, parking lots when they need rehab, those aren't cheap. All those types of assets that will need to be, there are assets and infrastructure of the city that will need to eventually be replaced. We now have a good accounting of, of everything and all those funds. The buildings, I touched on this a little bit with our CIP, is that we've now looked at every building and every project that's taken place within each building and we have a, a running total behind the scenes within each building of where they're at, how much rent they paid compared to the projects they've undertaken over time. And so for instance, City Hall now basically utilized some of the reserves of that building internal service fund to build this facility. Now it's paying rent on this, so it goes back into that pool, but the City Hall balance within the building fund itself is negative obviously because we've expended, you know, eight, nine, ten million dollars to build this facility. Now we'll recoup the rents on that over the next thirty plus years, fifty years or whatever the, the life cycle that is. And so we got a really good accounting of it now. It was a great exercise to do, but it was expensive exercise too. It's three hundred and, was it three hundred and forty eight thousand dollars to tie ourselves to specific assets and tie us to a, a replacement schedule on this. And so we can really determine long-term that you're going to have funds available to replace the HVAC on these units, replace windows in public works facility or, or the fire, or the police station, do any type of improvements you have, knowing that you'll have funds there. But I, when we started this exercise, I said, my concern is that we pay rents on this for all these years and then we come to the time where we need to make a major investment and we're going to have to go to the council and say, yeah, we don't have the funds for it. I don't want to do that. I want to say, we've saved over these number of years for that facility, now we can move forward and do what we need to do. We don't have to be able, and maybe at that point in time, it's, it's still beyond our means, but we've done our due diligence at this point in time to say, we have enough funds on hand, we can pay for this and not increase taxes at that point in time, so.
But the balance there is recognize that you're not going to do major improvements to every building all at the same time.
Absolutely, and that's where we have the, the individual balances of each building. It's amazing to see, okay, so we have, I don't know what the cash balance is, but say it's four million dollars in the building fund, you know, City Hall's negative, well, which building would be positive? Like, the fire stations are a, a positive number. Public Works Building, that's pretty close to break even, a couple more years, and I think that that'll be about at zero, then that'll start accumulating rents because there's a bond issuance on that one and such. And so it's interesting to see the difference levels of funding and where all the balances are at. San Venture has a big positive balance.
I, I wouldn't be too concerned about a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar shortfall. I, I, I was more concerned back when there was no fund at all.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
That's exactly what happened is, okay, now you need a roof for two million dollars, how are you going to pay for it?
Right.
Yep.
And that falls on the backs of the taxpayers that year.
Well, if you don't, you know, bond out an improvement, put the debt on to the general levy for how many years, or you put it into the levy, do the improvement, the next year you're not doing that improvement, you drop the levy down and now you've got.
You're playing catch-up forever.
You've got these swings happening in your general levy, so.
A good example is, is the public works where it isn't making any money because it's paying that bond payment. There's mechanisms you can use, but not any that are really going to help you in, in the long-term to repurchase.
It was so new that when it was taking its, its building rental to put, offset the bond, you're not going to put anything into that building the first five, seven years anyway.
Yep.
I have a question for Darren. So the replacement costs and getting that right size, we've been working on because we're finding that the rent on some of these bigger, bigger items is not paying the freight to get there, and I understand that. You, you mentioned in your letter here for, one of those is going to have an impact in twenty twenty of sixty three thousand, six hundred. And then my next question's actually going to be in two paragraphs down, we're talking about the, the park, the building park gasket and internal service funds where our twenty twenty impact is for a one-time three hundred and forty eight thousand.
I, I kind of figured you might point that one out and that one, it, it caused me some time to think about that one as well too. So you're, you know, sort of delaying a sixty five thousand dollar payment, but we're taking on a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar payment. So what's the purpose there? My thoughts are is that looking at the tax levy itself and that operational piece of that levy, which we said was two point eight, six percent or whatnot on that end of it, that operational levy is taking into consideration all the, the wages and benefit stuff that we just talked about, and it's taking into consideration the rent charges as well. And I said, okay, that's a reasonable number, two and a half percent, two point six percent is a, is a reasonable number. Let's take that hit this year so we don't know what, because we don't know what's going to happen next year, the year after that and whatnot. And yeah, we can spread that out over two, three, four years, that'd be perfectly fine. But I thought, you know, now's the time, we can fit that in our operational piece of that, let's bite the bullet and be done with it and our accounting is, is solid on it and moving forward.
My here, my idea here too is that as we've taken these, you know, three, four years ago, there was a decision to lower the rents, right? To save some money and pay off some bonds or whatever.
Five years ago.
Yeah, it was a while ago, yeah.
That's fine. And then, but then we played catch-up and we, we're looking at trying to get caught up in that and so we developed as a council a staggered plan, right? And I think that, that's working, right? Our funds are becoming more healthy, our reserves. And then I see this sixty three thousand, I don't have a problem with that, but then I look at this one time and I'm going, hey, that's a lot in one year. Maybe that's an opportunity in this area, not to keep splitting things out, but in a budget process, may we, we split that out over, to save some money incrementally, not a big deal, but do that over two years.
We certainly can. I think the point that Darren is making is that we have an opportunity now to do it without no impact. Evaluation stays the same.
Right.
And that does not mean that we should do it all now.
Right.
But it certainly is, you know, we can get it done now and, and the impact is going to be negligible.
Right.
To the taxpayers. So that's, that's, that's our thinking on the, on the issue and, but again, that's part of the reason why we have this because much like last year, or two years ago, I guess, we had the discussion about the rents and, and this council had some concerns and then we put that plan in place to, to edge it in over time and we certainly can do that with this as well.
I'd like to split it up too.
Huh?
I, I agree, I'd like to see it split up.
Anybody else make a comment on that?
I think we took the staggered approach at the time, two, two or three years ago when we did it. And we're going to kind of get there after a certain amount of time. Still no, going to be as much impact at this time, but yeah, I think, you know, we may want to add another year to that too.
Yeah, we, we certainly can do that.
If, if there was enough consensus on this council, would that actually lower the levy amount a little bit?
It will have an impact on the levy.
Hmm.
We just open discussion now or?
Yes, sir, yeah.
I'll tell you what my biggest concern is and it's not something that we have control over to a point. The very first slide I actually disagreed with, where it said this is our box and it's all we can control. We can actually try to control more than that. Matter of fact, we came, we came up with scale to try to do just that, except we weren't successful. The, the payable, this slide.
Oh, we'll get there.
Yep, we'll get there.
Well, I'm kind of there now.
Well, let's have Darren catch up here a little bit.
We'll, we'll get there.
Couple more, couple more slides, I think, and we'll, we'll get to that one. So just looking at some other services and charges, we're adding some additional dollars for seal coating. There again, we're using those preventative maintenance dollars to help extend the life of those long-term roads and such like that. And then we have some additional dollars for palm buffer maintenance, tree trimming, printing, mailing, et cetera. That's about twenty six thousand dollars, but we do have some cuts in the budget as well, some one-time dollars that are going away. So kind of the net difference on that is about fifty thousand dollars for that street maintenance, seal coating and those other additional costs there as well, so.
I didn't see three hundred thousand savings in finance department with your resignation.
Did it get accepted or not? Are you still on the payroll or no? So looking, a little bit more at your budget impacts, looking at your revenues, this is a, a major area to look at. Typically, government, the revenues are pretty stagnant, pretty steady, not a lot of changes from one year to the next. Shakopee a little different. We've had some changes, we've had some hyper-development activity going on. Our building permits, as you've seen from our monthly financial reports, are through the roof. When we did the budget last year and we increased building permit revenue line item, I think we increased it close to twenty five percent, my stomach hurt putting that number in there because I'm like, you know, if there's any hiccup, we don't make that number. Fair enough, Mr. Kersky and his staff hit it in May. I'm like, wow, there's, you know, mud on my face, I guess, but there again, it, it's a good problem to have. You'd rather be on the, on the expanding side of it, as Mayor pointed out, rather than the contraction side of it, but it does bring some potential issues of when that curve begins to level out and so we got to prepare for that. That's, that's something that's definitely on the horizon. Our community center ice arena, we're seeing about a three and a half, three point, oops, sorry, I hit the wrong button. We're going to see about a three point eight percent increase in our revenues for twenty twenty in there, from two point two to two point three million. That's, that's good. That'll pay for additional operating costs, pay for, help offset some of the, the net loss that we see as a, as a group whole, whole wide on that end of it. That's good activity to see. Cable franchise fee, first time in ten years we've seen a decrease in our franchise fees from cable, cable television. So obviously there, and that's just not a trend here in Shakopee, we're seeing that probably metro-wide. I know at least some others that are experiencing the same percentage decrease that we are. There's been some changes to that regulation, some of those pig fees or, that have been given to us as dollars in the past, now it can be in-kind services that the cable companies can say that that's your contribution there. And so we're going to see continued declines in this and so we have to prepare for that. We're projecting to reduce the cable franchise fee by forty four thousand dollars for this next year. That's significant dollars.
And those will continue to decline in the future.
Yeah.
That's good news on the revenue side.
It's not good news.
It's not good news on the revenue side. Your EDA levy, we're projecting that, just to touch briefly on that, we're projecting that to still be flat for next year. We levied three hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year, we'll levy that again next year. You have the capacity to level, levy up to eight hundred and some thousand dollars based off of the market value of the, of the city. You can levy, the EDA commission can levy anywhere up on, up until that point, but we feel at this point, we're at a good level, given the, the project levels that are, that are taking place.
We talked about, we're using some of those federal EDA dollars for, for our innovation center, but is there any thought that we may want to think about or may need to use some of that for the innovation center or more of the EDA funds?
Not this year. We had that discussion and Mr. Kersky here, he can talk a bit in a little more detail, but ultimately determined that we would hold that off for a year at least until we understand, we don't want to levy if we don't know the project is moving forward. That's essentially what it is. And, and so until that decision is made, we, we will stay the course.
And the cycle of these things, these planning and everything would take a year anyway, so.
That's kind of what we're looking at.
Well, you have to see what your federal participation is, what the terms are.
Whether we move forward.
Cost of the project is.
Is there, you know, make come back and then council decides that, you know what, we're just not going to do this based upon, and, and so we don't want to levy the funds and then not need them. And so we decided to wait a year to get a little more stability, a little more clarity in that particular project.
That makes sense.
So getting to Counselor Lehman's slide here, this is, it's the next one here, but just to kind of set the stage a little bit. So what does this mean for the, the residential property taxpayer in Shakopee? For taxes payable twenty twenty, the average resident saw a six point seven percent increase in their property value. Fifty seven percent of the homes saw a five to fifteen percent increase in their value. So there's, there's lots of demand for Shakopee housing. That's market-driven forces right there causing increases in, in demand in sale prices because houses don't go up without sales and sales drive that, that price.
Over the days, yeah.
Average value increased from two hundred and fifty five thousand to two hundred and seventy two thousand. That wasn't probably two hundred and five thousand, two hundred and fifteen thousand when I arrived here three, three, four years ago. That number is, is skyrocketed substantially. And you can see as, as Mr. Reynolds mentioned earlier, that impact is about thirty nine dollars for four point six percent increase for a home that experiences that six point seven percent increase.
Which essentially brings us back to two hundred and eighteen dollars.
Twenty eighteen, yep. Twenty eighteen. So here's the, this was the chart you were looking at, right, Counselor Lehman? So I get this from the county assessor and it's a, it's a nice breakdown to see what is happening in the market. As you can see, the lower priced homes within the city of Shakopee, those homes from a hundred thousand to two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars are seeing a seven and a half to twelve percent increase in value. There's demand out there for those priced homes and that's what's, it's increasing those property values. The more.
Affordable housing.
Correct.
What, and I look at that number, I've been seeing it for years, that out of our twelve thousand homes in our community, seven thousand of those are priced at, are valued at two fifty or less. So I think we're pretty affordable. Yes, those values are in such great demand, or the homes are in such great demand, values are going up, right? But.
Here's the problem, at least the way I see it. The individuals that tend to own houses valued at a hundred to two fifty, the affordable stock that we have, are the ones that could least afford the impacts. And when we talk forty bucks, we're talking just the city box. When you add the school box, forty bucks, county box, forty bucks, met council, twenty bucks, whatever it is. And you add all these boxes together, it's always the least among us that get hit the hardest. And we can't control this here, but we can if we talk to our legislators as a, as a body and say, hey, they made an exception for veteran establishments, which. say, hey, they made an exception for veteran establishments, which they changed and went to, I started talking to them about VFWs and American Legions and stuff and having the first $100,000 in value exempted. That was the original discussion. The bill that they passed bipartisan at the State House was the first $100,000 on all commercial. It was a compromise made by both parties, so something actually got accomplished. But we have the ability here, this body, to say, hey, we want something done about this specific problem. And it would take an act of the state to do that. So first question is, is there consensus here that we want, that this is a concern, that the least among us get hit the hardest? Because it is for me. We want affordable housing, yet the most affordable housing gets hit the worst year after year after year after year until they're no longer affordable.
And, you know, this is market-driven and the answer is to create more affordable housing. I mean, that essentially is, and how you do that is ultimately the question.
Supply and demand.
It's a supply and demand issue. The most in-demand houses are those houses that you're specifically talking about. If we increase the supply of affordable housing, that will have a market forces impact, it'll increase the number of houses available.
If you're using these folks' tax money to subsidize that affordable housing, now they're getting hit again.
Well, this, this body is not using city taxes to subsidize anyone's affordable housing.
Okay, if the state does, it's the same impact.
We're looking at densities, which you always have a problem with, that, you know, when we increase those densities so that the builders can build something like affordable housing, more stacked and packed, you know how it is.
And they're actually looking at it right now at the state, so it's a good conversation to have with them because they're looking at state regulations, they're looking at all kinds of drivers. So I think right now they're looking at the whole goulash, if you will.
If you put something together and present it to us.
I think that, you know, don't you want your home as an investment to increase in value? And yes, that comes with additional expenses, whether it's your furnace, your roof, your siding.
You do it on tax day, you do it when you shut it.
And the taxes, I mean, my house goes up, it has taxes. I look at houses at 250 or less and whether that's six or seven or $800 per year of city portion and to your point, is that $80 or $90 a month? My city...
One box, you gotta add all the boxes.
No, but, and you're right, you want to talk about all the boxes and we get a lot of calls about the total box, the whole thing. We talk about ours and we can try to minimize our impact and have control of that, but housing values and taxes, and my house goes up in taxes, I think I pay over $1,200 in city taxes, so I pay little over $100 a month, yet whatever your city line, divide by 12, or whatever we pay, we all get the same services. We all get a street light, we all get a police and whether you pay $80 or $800 in taxes or 1,200 or 1,400 in taxes, we still get the same level of services. The parks are still mowed, there's fire, there's police, there's nice roads.
You can't have 7,000 affordable houses and keep hitting them every year with every box and expect them to remain affordable.
The values are set by the county and the state formula maybe ties into how they, they do that.
It's a state issue, I admit, it's a state issue.
Right.
And I'm asking, I'm saying that our impact, along with the budget, frankly, I mean, we can take items like a foreign business wants to come in here from outside, they're not our constituents. We'll make an improvement to this, it'll now be valued more than it was and we tell them, we'll give you the, whatever taxes come off the new improvement back. We don't even do that for our own constituents.
Well, the difference is, is that when you have those particular organizations coming in and that kind of agreement is reached, you actually have a bank in 15 or 20 years where you know that that increment is coming onto your tax rolls.
Yep.
And boy, when those puppies come on and we're going to have that in three years, we're going to have $743,000 coming off from two or three different TIPS.
Right, 2025, actually.
25?
I believe so.
So what would happen if we did a TIF district over old part of Shakopee for seven years and said, as your value goes up, if you use them dollars back into the property for improvements?
Go to the legislature and get that approved as something that's legal. Currently, it's not, so.
So there's a couple of different options because now you're guaranteeing your future stock will be in good shape.
Not everybody can, wants to improve their house.
You brought up a good question earlier about scale and we do road projects every year. Has there ever been a discussion about combining all the city's road projects and things and going out for bid? Is that legal? Would that be something we could work with? Having a bigger plan for everybody's cities milling overlays or reconstruction projects?
We're in some co-op.
We do the crack seal.
Yeah, we do some crack seal.
Mayor and council members, we do it for chip seal, crack seal, striping. We don't, we don't do it for the major reconstruction projects. They'd be difficult projects to coordinate with other communities, especially when the assessment process is involved and timing. It's possible, but it'd be difficult and to be honest with you, a lot of those projects, they're difficult to get done in a year anyways. I wouldn't want them to be bigger.
And you got too many different variables with them.
Darren, continue here.
And Mr. Mayor, I should mention too that kind of response to Councilman Lehman is that there are some circuit breakers out there. So there is a market value exclusion built into the taxes as well too. So the lower-valued homes do get part of their market value excluded from their taxes and that is a graduated scale, so as the price of the home goes up, that benefit drops up.
Right, so it's a double, it's a double loss for the poorest among us.
Right, but it is, it is out there. And then there is also...
There's another fix at the state.
The Department of Revenue has tax rebates as well too. So if your property goes up, I believe it's, it's over 10% in valuation or your taxes go up over 10% and over $100 in a year, you can get a rebate from the Department of Revenue for that. You have to file a form for that and not many people do that or even are aware of it. And the rumor I heard is that if everybody knew about it, the Department of Revenue wouldn't be able to afford to fund that program. So they got it out there and they advertise it, but not very many people take advantage of that. So there are a couple of property tax rebate options out there for people that see increases in taxes over a certain dollar amount or percentage threshold, so.
And we've, we've assisted at least one person last year do that paperwork and, you know, we, we really should get that word out more and I, as part of our communication plan and I will, I will, I will make sure that that happens this year.
A property tax refund?
Yeah, make sure that all the residents are aware, maybe even target specifically those, those particular homeowners.
Fine, I think they offer a deferment program in Minnesota for elderly fixed income social security, there's some requirements to that.
And I think we worked with some people last year too.
I'm not sure what the rules are in Minnesota, but...
Yep. So looking at your values of your home, here's just three different valued homes within the city of Shakopee and taking into consideration that previous chart, so that home at 188,000 would tie to the percentage increase of, you know, 8.3% with that. So the 272,000 follows, falls in line with that same range and so you can see the tax impact for those three type size homes within the city of Shakopee or priced homes within the city of Shakopee. Tax capacity and tax rate comparison, I don't think I had this in my memo. I think I keep forgetting to put it in there, but I know the mayor always asks. Is it, okay. Here, again, we can kind of see where our tax rate has been, last three years, three years including 2020 will be a decrease in the tax rate. In the last four out of five years, I believe, as Mr. Reynolds mentioned, that the tax rate will actually be decreasing. The bigger piece of that is that net tax capacity increase. You can see that that's skyrocketing, that's at 1.2 billion over the last couple of years and new construction is in there. That 220 or 225 million or 250 million is in that number as well too and that helps bring down that, that tax rate. It's just not the appreciation of values, of values, it's new construction as well. And these numbers do include the EDA levy going back. We did this exercise a couple of years ago, we wanted to make sure that we include the EDA levy in our tax rates, so we're comparing apples to apples, so just to note that. So here's our preliminary budget, looking at that compared to 2019 and the previous couple of actual years. Everything you see in the revenues and the expenditure columns, everything that we talked about tonight is included in here. And it comes down, kind of the one big item to note towards the bottom is the prior committed funds. And we'll talk about that now a little bit, is, that's a new item for the 2020 budget. And this, this graph will come back up here in a second, but I want to get to this next slide.
I think I have that page, do I?
One more.
So as we mentioned, building permit revenue impact, we've had a hyper-amount of commercial industrial and high residential development as well too, but really our, our commercial industrial building activity has been phenomenal. That is the big driver of our building permit revenue. Those are big projects, big dollar, high dollar projects, but they're also long-term projects, they're multi-year type of facilities. Some of these projects that come in at the end of the year, we may take two, three years to inspect them. So we'll incur expenditures two, three years down the road after we've received the revenue and we've recognized that revenue. We're required to close our books annually on that end of it. We recognize the revenue in the year we receive it. We don't forego revenue to the future to kind of match up when the expenditures take place, we recognize that revenue when it, when it comes in. So what we're seeing this year is that, I mean, we surpassed our budget in May of our building permit budget line item. We're projecting we will have about $1.5 million in building permit surplus and that's not, that's not due to the price of the permits, it's due to the volume of the permits.
And that's, and that's a surplus only in the context of it being in this budget cycle. It's not an actual surplus. That is, that is money that will be used to pay the expenses for those projects in the next subsequent budget cycle.
I think that there's been a lot of discussion about building permit fees in the last two months and we'll, we're going to hear more from that down the line on our presentation, but...
Yes, sir.
It, I understand this, you collect that fee, but like in Canterbury or the West End, I mean, those, you build out over a couple of years and that's when you have the expenses. If Dorn comes in for phase two or, or the Sands project, you know, they got 100 units there, they have 200 waiting, those, those, that's additional expenses with that building permit paid. And everybody goes, well, that's a part of the problem on the affordable housing. I get pretty upset over that because if you don't think it's the price of land or if you don't think it's the price of the building materials, I, I don't think that building fees represent less than 15% of the cost of a home. Also, if you turn the, turn that study over and look at all the communities that are redlining underneath their fees, meaning they collect the fees and they have more expenses than the fees that they're collecting, now who is subsidizing the building of a new business and it is the general taxpayer?
The general taxpayer is doing that and the city of Shakopee did that up until 2015.
Right.
So we don't do that anymore.
Right.
We have fees that are designed to pay the cost, nothing more, nothing less than what we actually are expending as part of the process to inspect those particular buildings. And again, you know, Mr. Kersky, from what I heard today, is going to have another project that comes in and it may be another $100,000 in fees that we're going to get in November and which will be on our, our income for November that won't see any action until at least middle of next year and, and, and which clearly will go into the next year.
Let me just, a couple of points on this topic. When you set a budget and you project, I'm going to do, I'm going to fix this many cars this week and I fixed twice as many as I thought I was going to fix this week. It's the same as when we project what we're going to collect for building fees. We're projecting a number, it's just a made-up number.
Yeah, it's an estimate.
It's a, it's a made-up number. We're projecting this based on last year's activity and if this year is twice of what last year was, this number will be twice as what we projected. It doesn't mean we're overcharging, it means that we were twice as busy.
And that, and that is, that is absolutely correct. It's based upon the volume of work that you're doing. And again, it's not, it's all about timing of where those fees come in and when that volume is actually going to be dissipated.
And when I talk about the cost of, of regulations on building, I'll give you a good example. And here again, it's not the city per se, it's the state. Let's wrap these houses up really, 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 really tight until they're so tight that they become full of black mold and now let's require them to have air exchanger systems. Okay? That's a prime example of a pretty high cost to a new construction of house for a problem created by government. These are the types of regulations that cost new houses to cost more.
Are you talking about the air exchanger?
Well, the, the requirement that came out how many years ago that they had to be wrapped really, really, really tight for energy efficiency, which created another problem, holding all the moisture in, creating black mold. And to get away from that problem, instead of saying, you know what, you don't have to wrap it that tight...
Or you have an air exchanger.
Now, you, we're still going to require you to do what we shouldn't have required you to do and make it too tight that your pilot light don't stay lit. Now we're going to have to have this air exchanger over here for another 12 grand and make it that much more expensive. Okay? This is, these are the types of things that add cost into it and it's, it's not frustrating, actually.
Yeah, and the state is taking a look at it right now and I hope that they, they can see through some of the red meat that's been currently thrown on the table as, you know, without much thought or analysis, to come to those real issues that really define why houses are more expensive. And I'm, I'm going to be participating in some of those discussions in this next year.
After you get the fiscal disparity stream though, please, thank you.
That is, that is the end, if the end-all be-all, if that can happen, I'll quit and call it a day.
Let's have a great discussion, appreciate it. Darren, continue.
Yeah, just a couple more things in this commitment piece of it. So we're projecting, you know, $1.5 million additional building permits compared to what our budget is. What we're recommending the council do is look at actually formally committing those excess dollars at $1.5 million. A commitment according to the governmental accounting standards board, GASB, it requires formal action of the council to commit those funds for a specific future use. And so we would do that in December when we do the budget process of that. And so we're going to commit $1.5 million for that for future use with the notion that we're going to use 667,000 of that, I believe is the number, for 2020 to help solidify the 2020 budget at that, at that point in time. So that'll remain about, you know, we got about $800,000 left in that committed dollars for future years to use in 2021 or 2022, depending on where it's sitting at. And then at the end of next year at this time, we can look at building permits and if we're sitting, hopefully not going to win the same boat, you'd love to have that problem again, we can, we can increase that threshold again up to the $1.5 million or if permits have gone back to a normal pace, we can use the rest of those committed funds for the 2021 levy at that point in time. So we're using those dollars that have come in for building permits for future building inspection purposes, building, not development, but building department-related expenditures. And so that 667,000 then would be used, added to our fund balance above our normal 45% part of that, it'll be, get added to our fund, our balance sheet and be part of our fund balance, but it's a, it's a committed line notated within the, the balance sheet of the financial statements and so.
This is a larger version of what we did with the yearly contracts for the community center. We essentially said, you know, we're getting all this revenue on this particular year, but, you know, in that case, we broke it out by revenue each month. This is similar to that action.
It really, it truly is that, that similar. It's more on an annual basis versus a month-to-month basis, but yeah, absolutely, that's...
But committing it to the building department for salaries.
Absolutely, to, to pay the funds that...
Or equipment.
Or equipment, training, everything that is needed for ensuring that we have those particular projects inspected and taken care of. inspected and taken care of with the fundings that we're receiving this calendar year. If, if, if we were able to do it per, if we could charge per visit or charge per, but no, in, in Minnesota, you get a building permit, you pay the fee at that particular time.
But then you get three or four inspections depending on.
20, 30, depending on.
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, I got to come back, you didn't do it right, I'll come back.
Yeah, so.
Or you get 20 minutes to 30 minutes of, of some staff person to say, here's how you can build this deck. You put this like this, this here, it's got to be this size bolt. And they kind of walk you through it and then you go build it and then it come out and say, you took my advice, nice job.
Right.
You know? But that staff time is, it has a value to it.
Has, right, right.
Well, absolutely. I mean, we would not need these staff members absent this particular, uh, transaction. And so like, like, like so many other fees, the phil, the philosophy is, is that if it's for you personally, then it should be a fee that you pay. It's for the general public, it should be on the general tax levy.
But the, the issue is, is pessimistic. But if the economy takes a downturn, some of these fees are still going to come in.
Oh, these fees are already on the books this year.
2020.
We're just kicking them out.
And if there's a downturn, then following year doesn't collect fees, the gross stops. Then you're no longer collecting them fees. You still have the staff on hand.
Yep.
To continue to follow up and finish the projects from the year prior.
Perfect, yep, exactly.
Otherwise you lay them off and nobody can do the final inspections on 180,000 properties. And then we're, then we're in trouble, right?
Yep.
One more point that bother. So we have the different boxes on our property tax statements. And, and it bothers me that all these entities, be it the city, county, school, Met Council, the guy on the beach, other taxing guy. They never seem to communicate amongst themselves. You know, this one over here is only worried about themselves. This one over here is worried about their box. That one's worried about their box. But they never think about what happens when we combine these three together. What's it really do to the same group of individuals that all of us represent? And, and it, it, you know, scale I thought was going to do something with this, but maybe we need to do it.
Actually, we do. We do it behind the scenes. Not only will city administrators compare rates, but even more importantly, you know, there have been discussions in the past with me and, and, and a school district superintendent regarding the impact of knowing that they were going to have to raise some taxes. And, you know, frankly, last year we delivered a tax cut. And so, uh, you know, those discussions do happen. And, uh, we also discussed with the county. The county is a different animal in a lot of respects though, because they have the overall umbrella. And it's not as easy, but we certainly talk about the tax rates and the tax levies as well. But no, we've, we've, we've done that. Has it ever been really formalized? No. But it certainly is a topic amongst, uh, staff.
County always throws in that wrinkle of human services that is kind of a completely different from.
But a chunk of that funding comes from the state and passes down to the county. So it's really not a, a general levy amount. A portion of it, maybe.
They use that excuse.
Yeah, a portion, yeah.
A portion of it, maybe. But, I mean, it would be good, I think it'd be good to have that formalized so that everybody could see the interaction between the various bodies. And it'd be nice to see all of them not really caring the overall combined impact on the, the little guy.
I want the phone number to Mr. Other on the tax.
Good luck finding him.
You know, I, 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 I.
Other.
That is one thing, if you want transparency in government, tell us who the heck these people are. And break it out.
You know who they are, so I'm in water, you got the mosquito guys.
All right, Darren.
So just in summary, uh, the preliminary levy, just a reminder, is the maximum levy that can be levied. So, uh, when we, when the council approves a preliminary levy, it cannot go higher than that after September 17th, after the, the next council meeting, it can go lower. But it can't be increased. Between now and then, um, between that preliminary level and final levy, we'll be, you know, looking at the details and fine tuning and everything. Um, and we will have on the agenda next, for next council meeting and EDA meeting, the preliminary levy for both the EDA and the, the city council. And one last thing I should mention too is that, and I didn't, um, mention it tonight, is that when we talked about that preliminary levy and we were talking about the rents a little bit. So our new growth this year, um, just the new growth itself, we'd be able to increase the levy by about 300, it's about $346,000. Just for the new growth, the new taxpayers that are coming into the tax base itself.
Do nothing through.
And so when we look at, when we look at that operational piece of that, yeah, we have some dollars for infrastructure, for capital improvement fund, for park development, redevelopment. But look at that operational piece of that. And I know we want to be cognizant of the levy and such like that, but really taking, we need to take advantage of that. Of a growing community, you need to take advantage of that new growth piece and. $46,000 is kind of, is the rough estimate. It's a rough calculation, but it's.
Well, and, and what Mr. Nelson is trying to do is advocate, be an advocate for the full, uh, charge for, uh, those, uh, funds at 348, 700. And, and I certainly understand that. And, uh, you know, I, I had been in discussions earlier of Mr. Nelson and Mr. Burkett, who by the way, Mr. Burkett will be taking over preliminarily Mr. Nelson's duties. So feel free to, to criticize him on the length of his presentations and slides in the future, much like, uh, Mr. Nelson. But, uh, and that is an important piece to take into consideration. You know, we're, we're sitting really fiscally well and we're able to do some things that are investments that will carry us through when we hit the, the growth curve. And, uh, this is certainly one of, it doesn't have to be all done in one year, but man oh man, now's the time to do it if we could. But, uh, certainly from, uh, I certainly understand, uh, the consensus of, of this body. And, and, uh, you know, we'll, we'll take a look at that.
Let's make sure here, just, uh, I know Counselor Laman, Counselor Whiting, kind of the idea here that I brought up. And, you know, I, I'm not trying to cut it, I'm trying to stagger it a little bit. But, uh, is that, do you have a, a comment or opinion on that, Counselor?
I'm okay either way. I, I personally like to get things off my books, um, when, on my own budget. So if I have the opportunity to pay something off, I like to do it right away. So it's not hanging out there.
I'm exactly with, um, Counselor Brennan. I, if I have the opportunity and have the money at hand, I get rid of it and be done instead of trying to make payments on it. Just get it done, you have it available at that time.
I'm not trying to cut it, I'm trying to stagger it.
No, right, I didn't say cut it, I, I said.
Let us to stagger that.
Stagger it. And I, you know, is it something, we're all looking here at the budget trying to, you know, I get that, the, you know, the, the, the pay increase, the health, we're doing the best we can, you know, fire pension, the election, some of these bigger, that depreciation of 64, I get that.
We're adding new items into this budget. We're adding a $200,000 park levy that we've never had. Certainly this is not a high priority in my mind.
200,000 would be one of them.
500,000 dollar capital. They're new things, so it seems like.
If we did 174, 350 this year, 174, 350 next year, then flatten it out.
Yeah, and the, the, just talking with Mr. Nelson to, to confirm, uh, you know, the impact on the, on the levy, that would bring it down, the total levy to somewhere around 4.950, 5.1, uh, that ballpark, so.
And I have been seeing, uh, I haven't got our comparable cities back yet, but I, I do have a handful of them. City Maplewood sent out their own survey with kind of their comparables and surrounding cities. And they had about 15 cities in their area that included three or four comparables of ours. And, and the average levy increases is 6% on the nose. But everybody, last year we saw a big, big disparity. I mean, we were on the list at a negative and there are ones up there at 12, 13, 14%. This year their, the disparities or the kind of dispersion group is anywhere from about 5% to about 8%. So it's, it's pretty tight this year.
Well, again, as Darren said, the, the next meeting on the 17th, hopefully we adopt the proposed maximum levy and adopt the final CIP for 2019, 2023. Counselor Laman, uh, you had to leave last meeting going through the park plan and the CIP. And you said you were going to get your comments too, so. Uh, sharpen your pencils. And any comments can be directed to staff here. Any other comments? Darren, thank you.
Thank you. And it says here that my presentation was only a minute and 24 seconds. Or is that one hour and 24 minutes that says on here? It doesn't say it up there, but it's on here, so. Thank you very much, appreciate your input.
Yeah, thanks everyone, because, you know, this is critical once again, uh, to people in the community to understand what it is we're doing and why. And, uh, thank you for the comments, thank you for the questions. And, uh, you know, sincerely appreciate the ability to come before you and talk about, uh, next year's budget. I mean, this is, this is quite literally the most important document that we'll do on a yearly basis. And, uh, it is a policy document, it is the ultimate policy document.
Thank you. If we are completed with the 2000, uh, preliminary budget and levy review, we took no action.
I actually have another question here, it's at the back of this, very back page. Banditers on the very back page under both public safety and public works, both had an increase of 500,000 plus each. From the original budget of 19 to the requested 20. So. What's, what's changing in these two areas for half a million a piece?
So, Mr. Mayor, council members, so it's personnel, there, there's the main drivers that we see, it's personnel, it's the rent charges. That all goes, gets calculated into there. And so it's personnel, rent charges, and those other services that we saw. So this cracked ceiling of the $80,000 there, uh, that would have gone into public works. The savings that we saw from some of those one-time costs coming off, they might've been in a different department per se. But, um, really in the operational fund, it, it's pretty cut and dry. It's personnel and other services and charges, and that includes the rents that we pay, so.
Those are, those are your largest personnel budgets for the city.
So when you add people, remember they're your largest cost driver.
And we're, we are adding to public works and actually it's interesting, the.
Well, the key, I'm sorry, Mayor, the key is to add, add those people you need and not those that you don't.
Right.
And do it in a systematic and thoughtful manner.
Right.
Which is exactly what we've been doing.
All right. We good? All right. Moving ahead to 12A, the city bill list is, uh, in your hands for your review. 12B liaison and administration report, Counselor Contreras.
Just, um, SDA, sorry, I was looking at the, the city bill. For the SDA, they're Shakopee Diversity Alliance, again, they're just requesting, not requesting, but they're still looking, seeking for more board members. Always the invitation for more board members, so. Anyone interested, Thursdays, last Thursday of the month. Here at the city hall. Thank you, sir.
Okay, Counselor Whiting.
Uh, thank you. Counselor Brennan and I, uh, last Tuesday, I believe, had the interview committee. We, for the planning commission and Board of Adjustment and Appeals, we had five candidates. I want to thank all the applicants that came forward to volunteer their time to be a part of this city. We had, uh, the five candidates had various backgrounds. It was a difficult decision, um, but appreciate everybody that came out. And, uh, um, we managed to finish that up. Last Wednesday was the MVTA, uh, we had a, uh, that's Minnesota Valley Transit. We discussed, uh, some of the new grant proposals from the Met Council. And, uh, the way they pegged some of those grants for the bus rapid transit routes make it kind of difficult for anybody but the Met Council to, to get that money. So, uh, Metro Transit, that is. We're trying to work with that and see if there's something that we can come up with.
There's got to be some grant money, and I know there has been in the past, but for the opt-outs and, um.
Well, the way they.
I see.
The way they pick it, you know, there's, there's, the way they, the opt-outs get funded is, uh, through the motor vehicle sales tax and Minvest and the, and the Ramvest, and I forget what the Ramvest stands for, but it's vehicle sales tax, basically, regional, I think. But that is, through year to year, it's so, uh, you know, you never know what you're going to get out of it. And so you really got to plan your budget accordingly. And, uh, um, it's difficult to be an opt-out. But they did a great job, especially with some of the partnerships we've built in Shakopee. We're continuing discussions with Valley Fair and trying to get a bus stop there for them, a part of that 495 route. So, um, we also discussed, uh, some of their new software upgrades, which, uh, kind of keeps track of the buses and where you're at at all times and, uh, how many riders are on there. And, uh, you know, where that bus is and some of the applications that go on. So you can go on your phone and know where that bus is, you know, is it late or am I early to the bus stop or late? So there's a lot of innovation out there. We don't have it implemented on all the buses yet, but, uh, I think 11 of them have most of the software package. But that's going to be continued to all the buses real soon. That's about all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Laman.
Mayor, to Counselor Whiting's, um, funding source for the opt-outs. DMV is the only place I've ever seen in the world where people line up to give money and they still have a hard time taking it. It's unbelievable. I was there today for two hours, got nothing accomplished.
Reminds me of a cartoon I saw.
Their Malar system is preventing them from collecting money. And it's making them work twice as hard as they have been. It's, it's, it's unbelievable, what a mess. All right, Spuck, earlier to, before this meeting. One of the, uh, good discussion points they had at their last meeting, which was with, uh, the MMPA yearly summit thing was about electric car chargers, three-phase fast chargers, development ideas and strategic planning in construction to avoid coming back later with retrofit. Oh, um, good opportunity for our staff and their staff to try to figure out how you incorporate something like that into future development, where it might be located, what demographic it might serve. Do you just have conduit put in place? A low-cost type deal and then it can put the stuff in later if somebody decides they want to have one of these chargers or something. I know the fast ones were three-phase, but if a regular house, if you have electric car, they had the slow charge overnight is a regular phase. So it's not so much to the housing, it's more like the businesses, like Hyden's got one, I guess, the fast chargers down there.
We actually had, uh, looked at that for the community center and, uh, Spuck had determined that, uh, they weren't ready for it at that point, but.
Yep. Something going forward to, uh, that, um, they were talking with the MMPA and all their members and stuff, it was one of the deals. Windermere almost done. I think they said there was like a hundred feet of pipe or something to put in. Prairie Meadows is done, River, Ridge Creek is done, uh, Valley View Third is done. Worked on 178 gate valves, just checking the operations. Rebuilt eight fire hydrants as part of their rego-through-and-project. October 1st completion date for the booster station. And the tank for that booster station completion date is looking at November 2020, I believe. Landscaping for the booster station will start next spring. Probably not going to have enough season left this year. Uh, the only other thing that's a drawback on their booster station, it will be operational October 1st, but the, something about the doors were on back order or something, they're going to come in the middle of October. So they're supposed to build some nice looking wooden ones that are locked until the regular ones get in. Over here.
Windermere.
Windermere, yep. The thing, 14 outages, five from a storm, 17 customers, 1700 customers, 600 somewhere Shakopee. One was a contractor, severed a line, five suicide squirrels. No pole wraps in that area town, like they did the other areas. And I, that's all I have.
Counselor Laman, thank you. Counselor Lehman, thank you. Counselor Brennan?
I, I was at the interview committee. I'm not, I don't have much more to say, other than thank you to Ashley Supulvedo from the Planning Commission for partaking in the interviews. And the five applicants, who are all very good, like, like Counselor Whiting said. I also went to the Unified Transit Committee down in New Prague. We met down in New Prague. And most of the conversation was about the, the cities that are outside, like the Bell Plain, New Prague, and Elka, Elka New Market. So it didn't really, not much pertained to us specifically. I know that you were talking about the, I think it was 495, the, the new transit route. I know that there is a stop being put in at Savage at the depot, so if anybody ever wants to go out there. That's all I have.
Oh, very good. Last week, I went on a Minnesota River cruise put on by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, the Lower Minnesota Watershed District, the Savage Chamber. And the, the impairment of the Minnesota River and the amount of commerce that actually comes out of that was, I found it very fascinating. And lo and behold, then today in the Star Tribune, there was an article and talking about sediment and load. We should all do our part to shore up our, our riverbanks and create buffers so that we can, you know, if everybody did that part along the, I think, 300 miles of the Minnesota River, we could, you know, can do our own to, to have a positive outcome for that. They had a big price tag on there in the article today, but I found it fascinating that the river that you look at and stuff like that. But from Savage to St. Paul, we traveled, and I thought it was a great informative tour, a lot of information. And there's a couple of big reports out by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency that talks about the impairment and what can be done in the future. So I thought that was great.
You know, we have that river in our backyard.
Excuse me, huh?
You know, we have that river in our backyard. It's a beautiful river, isn't it?
But the sediment, nitrogen, phosphorus, and the flow, and I just found that, I found it fascinating to.
Are they showing the numbers coming down at all, some of those?
You know, we're at the end of the line, so that sediment, and they talk about this amount of sediment, but then they talk about the flow rate. And we're right here where, where you get a lot of it. It all just comes down here. And it starts way up north and the.
And our, in our particular case, we're not dredged.
Right.
But at Savage, they dredge the channel to 100 feet wide and nine foot deep, which I, you know, there's a real striking difference between our Minnesota River and even Savage's Minnesota River. It really is a large, and large barges are working that river every day. So.
Every day. And they talked about like the sediment, and they dredge it out, but then how it comes down throughout the, throughout the river, but then you dredge that, you just can't put that in the garbage, or that has to be contained, that silt and sediment, and then, you know, handled with care and dried out. Does, they did say it, they put it in big holding areas and asked to try out for a long time before they can handle it again. Counselor Lehman?
And we were talking about the humidity of, tropical humidity. And I pointed out that the water moves fast, the nature of it, but moving this mud humidity from these places, she said, if she had her way through a dam or a.
Yeah.
You kill all the water.
Yeah?
So.
Well.
They've got some big dreams, very expensive dreams that could not well follow.
Well, it's interesting, because City Administrator Reynolds was on the trip, and Counselor Brennan, and we, we looked at the different riverbank stabilization from, from Savage on, and some have some and some don't. But, boy, the, the uniqueness of the character of what they use to stabilize the bank gave us a, gave us a couple ideas if we could get approval.
A couple of years ago. I think there was six different methods that they've tried.
Right.
And some have failed, and some are working okay. And so they're trying to kind of perfect that whole idea.
Right.
But yeah, it, it, that Minnesota River travels a long way through farm country and everything. That is not going to be stabilized or concreted for any time soon. But you gotta chip away at it and, you know.
And.
Right.
In the stormwater runoff, and we've talked about that, I, I'm a, I'm a proponent of having buffers along the river's edge to, to hold back or, or filter it some way earlier before it gets there.
That holding concept is.
But interesting conversation. I will encourage you all to read that article. It was in the Star Tribune, because it was a great replay of what we all had heard on the cruise. So that's all I had for my liaison report. The city administrator report, Mr. Reynolds?
Nothing for council. We're good, sir.
All right. Next item, other business. Any other business before this board? Counselor Brennan?
I do. I would like to know how we get a speaker in here, like, for, to talk about affordable housing, like a, an overview, the, how the funding works, how the application process works. And if we could also invite the Planning Commission to come into the audience and listen to it also.
Okay.
Suggesting a workshop.
Mm-hmm.
Month or November or?
Some. Yeah.
And then when you sell it, you have a major windfall.
Try and buy it. I, I agree with your, your thought, though.
Yeah, we, we can do that. We'll figure out, we'll get some ideas of who to bring in, and that'll give Mr. Kurski something to do. He really hasn't been very busy lately.
All right. Thank you. No other business. Onto item 14. Counselor Contreras?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, September 17th, 2019, at 7:00 PM.
I have a motion, a second by Counselor Brennan. Further discussion, discussion, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, we are adjourned at 9:56.
Thanks, everyone.